The mission statement for the Lake Mills area school district is preparing all of today's students for tomorrow's opportunities. Has the meeting been properly posted?
Yes, so it was posted on the LMASD website and at the Lake Mills post office and submitted to the Lake Mills leader.
All right, then we can call this meeting to order and I'll invite all those who are able to stand and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of the world, one nation under God, indivisible, with the liberty of justice for all.
All right, I will request a roll call for attendance.
Brianna Beslick here.
Ken Imers.
Here.
Andrea Grimm.
Here.
Kirk Lund.
Here.
Amy Litcher.
Here. Are there any revisions to the agenda?
I'll move the board approve the agenda as presented.
I'll second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any questions or comments? All right, hearing none, I will ask for a voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, it passes. All right, we will move on to our first board report from Ms. Wasniak. Okay, whatever.
The good old Polish name of Waszynski, yes.
Oh, Waszynski, I was gonna say Wasniak, but that I know is the one-eyed monster, so.
I'll introduce my friends in just one second here, but first I just want to say congratulations, boys LCATs, so good luck the rest of this week at the state tournament. Reminder, I'm Teresa Waszynski, I am with EUA, the architectural partner that has been working with you guys on the successful referendum. I'm gonna have my two friends from Findorf come up and you'll recognize one and the other will be a new face, so.
Hi, everybody, good to see you again. I'm Peter Sanin with Findorf. I've been with you for a long time working on these projects, but I also want to introduce a new name who will be getting more involved as we start getting ready to bid and scope things out and get people on board to actually do the work. So this is John Winch, I'll let him introduce himself.
Good evening, everyone, I'm John Winch, project manager with Findorf, and looking forward to working with you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, tonight is a great time to give you guys a design update, and Peter and John are gonna jump in with some high-level budget updates as well. So, we wanted to talk through where we are in the process, the designs that the core team has been seeing and reviewing to date, and then what's next. So, on the next slide, here's, we'll come back to this slide at the very end as well, but looking at the design and construction schedule, so you'll see we're in that, I think this week is actually technically spring, so we're in spring 2025. We're over a third of the way through the design of the elementary addition and the work at that building, as well as a third of the way through the middle school renovations. We'll talk a little bit about the middle school site and that schedule, and then at the high school, we just wrapped up our schematic design set, and we'll show you what that looks like and what that means. So, starting with the elementary school, this is just an overall floor plan. What is highlighted in orange is what is the addition to the existing building that you have. So if we look on the next slide, we can zoom into that orange addition, and what that is, is four classrooms largely similar to the existing kindergarten classrooms that are in the building currently. Each classroom has an individual toilet and in-room cubbies, which are really good for supervision, so kids aren't bouncing in and out of the hall. And then also in the addition is a staff workroom, a little bit of storage, and then some small spaces for mechanical and electrical needs. And then this will be rerouting the fencing so that those kids also have direct access to that kindergarten playground on the east. Here, we're looking at the exterior of what we plan for that addition to look like as we go through city approvals. We're largely mimicking the materials and the color palette of the existing building, pulling in that same brick, some of the blue metal panel that already exists in the building, similar windows with the red trim, just really making it look like it was always there.
Teresa, this question, is there still a, maybe there was never, but the proximity to the lot line for the line of the classrooms, was there ever an issue there with?
Yeah, we're actually working through that with the city right now to make sure that we have all the right-of-way setbacks. And because, you know, there's some uniqueness at the elementary school because it's really a corner lot, even though the east along Birch Street feels like a side yard, it's actually considered a front yard. And so, we're actually, I have an email to send tonight to the building inspector as we work through that, but yes, it will need to meet the required setbacks from the city.
Is there, then, is there a plan, I'm sure it's probably gonna go through, but what happens if it doesn't?
Be a variance to increase that, or decrease the setback to be a side yard versus a right-of-way, and the other option would be calling it a planned development district, and so we're exploring kind of both means and methods. If neither of those were successful with the city, there's an option to reduce the corridor width in a way that doesn't compromise the learning spaces or function of the building.
Okay, thank you.
This is looking a little more green on the screen than it might on your computers. We, our interior designer has been working with the core team, sharing color palettes and materials that are planned for the addition, so largely this is mimicking what you already have at the elementary school. We really don't want to introduce new things. So, the bathroom tile is the same tile that exists in other places in the building. One of the things that we are doing is introducing a teal color that Wendy and Brad looked at and talked through with their team as kind of the identifying color at the elementary school. Each grade level, each neighborhood has a different identifying color. It helps with wayfinding, and you can tell kids, you know, line up at the teal wall or go to the teal neighborhood, or, so that was the color that was decided and introduced for the kindergarten, the new addition. Some other things that we're working on, just threw in there a snapshot, our structural engineer is actively working through the design of the structure, make sure everything stands up. There's a model there of the steel, the example there is the finish plans where we'd have carpet in the kindergarten rooms, but also hard-surface flooring where the sinks and the cubbies are to keep the dirt off where the kids are on the floor. Some of the other things that are happening at the elementary school are the lighting replacement, and then improvements to replacements to the key fob and access controls. We are able to tap into the existing geothermal system for the heating, which is great, and as I mentioned before, we're actively working through the site approvals for that project. I think the next slide, I believe we're talking about the middle school. So here, scope's a little bit different, so the areas of the building that are actually being renovated to move walls, move doors are at the main office, we're adding a wall and some doors to create two offices, and create a conference room, and relocate an IT office from where they're currently, or a room that's currently in the library. In the library itself, a lot of the project involves furniture replacement, but we're also taking a larger conference room and turning it into two small group, SGI's, small group instruction spaces for students to be able to use but still be supervised within the library space. So, we're just starting to look at that in 3D to figure out where accent colors will go, ceiling baffles for acoustics, flooring patterns and things like that, and slowly getting those, you know, looking at the columns in the space, maybe wrapping those with wood to pull some accents out of the walls, but that's all in progress right now, but these are the types of imagery that we're reviewing with the core team to talk through those. And then this was just, our interior designer does such a nice job, but just talking about the theme of from text to tech, and when you're dealing with middle schoolers, you know, the activities that they're engaging in and interested in, and being able to pull what is attractive about those types of things and pull that into the library space. At the middle school, we have a larger amount of the capital maintenance, so we also have a lighting package here, new generator, new fire alarm system, new public address system, adding additional cabling for wireless access points, new upgraded security cameras, we're replacing several heat pumps, and then updating the mechanical controls. So I don't have drawings for those yet, but we're getting there, so that'll be your next update. I'm gonna pause there just for a second and have Peter and John give a high-level update on the budget that we've done to date based on our schematic design sets for those two projects.
Thanks, Teresa. So as you hopefully recall, part of why you hire a construction manager is because you want us to complete the job and do a great job and have it be under budget and on time, but also, we're involved early on in the process. As the design is being completed, we're providing budget updates. And so with the middle school and the elementary school, we've looked at those designs that have come in, and we can confirm that those are right now trending on budget, in some cases maybe even a little bit under, but that's what we would expect at this time because the design will continue to grow and change just slightly. So, the goal is that we are informing the design with the budget to say, yes, what is...
Supervision concerns and playground logistics for the middle school. So one of the things that we're doing is we are pausing the middle school site design until we have bids back from the middle school work and the elementary work, in the hopes that maybe there's some cost savings that we could put for the middle school site in advancing that. One of the things, oh geez, I forgot my reading glasses. On the slide, I think the date says, "Design early 2025." It's really supposed to be early 2026, when we have bids back from all of the projects. We would recognize if there was cost savings there, that maybe there's more funds to allocate. What is in the budget is removing the retaining wall and regrading the sidewalk to slope to the site along that southern street, adding a fence at that southern boundary for security, restoring to grass and removing retaining wall at the tennis court and replacing a railing at the stair. That doesn't solve some of the additional needs at the middle school. Again, that consolidated playground for supervision, some of the baseball needs, the ability to address parent and bus drop-off pickup, and then some dumpster enclosure and a fence separation at that playground. So, the middle school site will be picked up and design will start early January 2026.
Teresa, that includes possibly if that baseball field could be removed, is that right, and built somewhere else at the high school?
I believe that is a topic of conversation. I'm gonna look at Tanya and hope she jumps in here.
I mean, we're still kinda behind the scenes exploring some options, that the baseball diamond isn't part of the referendum, so we're just looking at some possible costs. At a very minimum, kind of bare bones, baseball diamond, what would that cost? Is it even a possibility? We haven't, you know, discussed as a board, do we have money, where would we get that? There's fundraising opportunities. So we just are exploring that right now to see if it's even within the realm of being doable. But we are on a timeline because of the way the referendum funds have to be expended, so that's why we're putting that portion on the last piece of that, just to see if there's anything we could do about the current baseball diamond. Otherwise, it doesn't really give us any options as far as the middle school playground right now.
And we want to make sure we have a court for ball sports, correct, at the middle school? So it says restoring to grass, but we've talked about how we want.
Right, we were looking into that, yeah, and so, so we have it with our core team meetings, we haven't even discussed really the middle school site at all.
We've really just punted it.
Yeah.
So next, we can get into the high school. Where do I start? There's a lot here. So, anything that is a color is areas of the building that are either being renovated or added new. So on the left is the overall first floor, on the right is the overall lower level. So, just that, we zoom into each of these areas in the next few slides, so just at a very high level, I'll walk you through as you come in the existing main entrance, offices off to the left, and there is an addition here. That addition will connect down with the monumental stair to what will be the new gym lobby and the new gym. On that, back to the first floor, what is the current main lobby, you have the existing main gym, which will be getting new bleachers, you have the existing stage, as you walk through, we have the cafeteria, there's some reconfiguration here at the cafeteria and the supporting music spaces, a few renovations to some of these smaller rooms to create offices, and this becomes a new special ed room, improvements at the auditorium. If I'm in the lower level, this is all new.
Can you go back to the, and show everyone where the proposed elevator's gonna come up?
Okay.
Because then it's not through the gym anymore.
Yeah. So, the new elevator, so as you come in the main building, so if you were coming for an athletic event in the evening, you would use the new main entrance to the athletic event, and the elevator is right here. If you came in the main entrance, you'd come down this hallway, which will be bright and airy, skylight here, and elevator is right there. So, the elevator is no longer accessed through that gym.
Okay, thank you.
So when you are in the lower level, this is the main lobby, restrooms, concessions, athletic trainer close to the new gym, which will have two full courts and a main competition court. This dark, this green, olive-green here is all of the locker rooms being fully renovated and accessible, and then these orange spaces are some of those existing special ed spaces in the lower level of the building now. Jedi's moving down here and we're creating a little lounge in what was the face several years ago. So if we go through the next couple of slides, we're zooming in on each of these areas. So again, here's the new doors to what would be the main gym, main athletic entrance, the competition gym with a band of storage along here, monumental stair, great opportunities to create branding and identity, and we're actually, at the core team tomorrow, we're gonna talk about kind of getting student engagement and what they want that lobby to look and feel like. Again, I mentioned the restrooms, here's that elevator, this is a single-user restroom, some storage, mop sink, and then concessions and the athletic trainer room adjacent to the gym, but also close to the outdoor athletic fields. And then as we go through here, so here are four largely identical locker rooms that have private showers instead of the large group showers, lockers, restrooms, separate offices and single-user restrooms for those. Across the hall here, these are, the orange is the special ed spaces. Again, I forgot my reading glasses, so I can't read all those. Kale, if you want to jump up and save me, you can, but we have some life skills spaces, some general, smaller group room spaces. Across the hall, we have the mill, which is one of the functions in your building now, and the alternative high school spaces, and then this is that Jedi room. So really, this entire area of the lower level is getting significantly renovated and updated.
About the rec department, do we have a rec department office in there?
The rec department is on the first floor, so we'll see that in a second.
Can I ask a question before you move on?
Yep.
So within that space, do we have a more secured locked-off area for kind of those special events in the gym?
You know, funny you should ask, we just talked about that today. We had, we had an hour-long conversation about security doors and where those would go. So yes, we do, there's a way to largely, if you assume that both gyms would be used in an evening event, there's a way, oops. Here we are at the main, the first floor main entrance. We are doing a little bit in this area, one of the biggest concerns from staff was the ability to see and supervise around some of the larger columns, so we are trying to open that up a little bit just for safety and being able to see what's going on there. So this is, this is the existing office area, this is the addition piece of that, so it's gathering the administration and the student services and support spaces all on one side of the office, and this side, these offices to the right would become that rec department. And so I believe there's a way that they can enter and exit separately.
Just add, you know, our school psych is down by the foreign language wing, so this would also bring our school psych into the main office with the counselors, with both principals, and it just creates a more collaborative space instead of it being disjointed right now.
So we're not adding on any space to make the vestibule bigger, though, correct? We're just reformatting it?
The vestibule itself is not getting bigger, it's going to feel bigger because of a reduction of the large columns that are there. The addition is actually happening here to the, as you approach the main entrance to the left, for those office spaces.
Teresa, just quickly.
I was thinking, I feel like we were saying that the front entrance wasn't big enough for...
I think you were pushing in closer to the upper gym, though, with the vestibule, or am I wrong?
The access doors, kind of?
Outside doors. I thought that was taking up some of that kind of common space in front of the current gym.
I believe, so there's two, there's the exterior doors and then there's the vestibule and the interior doors. I believe one of those sets is shifting out slightly.
Shifting towards the current gym.
Right, because the vestibule's coming out this way as far as the secure entrance, so that's...
To make it more visible?
Bottom blue in the main office is a bigger vestibule on that side of it, because that's where people buzz in to get into the office, so that, that's kind of a self-contained area versus how it's set up now.
Was the, I guess, was there a question or concern?
So, the concern is just that the view from the office, which I feel like we've dealt with, but also just that it's like this really small entrance space, so when you're trying to get people in for events, but I guess now more events will be happening down in the bigger gym.
So the current, when you come to the office now and there's that small vestibule, so there's the doors that would be locked and you have to go in, that's gone entirely.
Okay.
So that small vestibule isn't there anymore. So, you have, these doors are largely in the same spot that they are now, but you enter into this whole vestibule and these doors would be locked, and you'd have to go into the office versus...
Office and then exit around.
Yes, yes, versus that smaller setup. It's a similar concept, but it's just a much bigger setup.
Okay, that clarifies, thank you.
And then on the next slide, the last area of the building that is being renovated is, we had talked about the needs of the music department and then the multipurpose cafeteria space, and being able to expand that seating while still providing an acoustically appropriate orchestra choir music room. And so right now, I believe there's an operable wall that we would be replacing with a solid wall, being able to add seating to the commons cafeteria, but being able to create the support spaces associated with this music room as well.
Is, Teresa, is, in the music room, I noticed it said, "Replacing the sound and lighting" or something.
In the auditorium?
Yeah.
Yep.
So, does that include the, you know, they have a large system, not computer, but, you know, multimedia system that controls things?
Oh, the sound booth at the back?
Yeah, does that include replacing that?
I believe one of the things, so that is being...
Yeah, the district's handling that separately, so EUA is not overseeing that, but that is something, you know, Luke is part of that team and the music teachers and myself and Nick, so we're working on that separately as far as replacing the sound system and then the lighting structure in the auditorium.
Okay, thank you.
So, at the middle school, we had text to tech. At the high school, we're really celebrating and focusing on LCAT pride. So, one of the things our team has done was hang out with the high schoolers. What are you excited about? What do you like about your school? And so, some of the themes that we heard from them, oops, and actually, on the next slide, we can get into that color palette a little bit, but obviously, it's celebrating the Lake Mills blue and gold and expanding on the color palettes that you already have in your building. But some of the things that we learned from the student engagement, and we're going to continue to do more of that, is, you know, loving the built-in seating, you know, they're proud of being an LCAT and being able to celebrate that. More windows, modernized bathrooms and locker rooms, making the space more personalized, space for those big backpacks, you know, really celebrating community and family, and then there was a comment about mechanicals. So, just too hot, too cold types of things, so all of those are going to be addressed, so if we, so that was just kind of feedback from hanging out with the students for the day, and like I said, we'll be back for more. On the next slide, so all that other stuff, so all the capital maintenance stuff, that again, I don't have drawings for you tonight, but that's, those are the next phases that we're getting into, replacing the generator, door and hardware replacement, flooring replacement in areas of the building that hadn't been previously replaced in 2019, replacing the bleachers in the gym, the new elevator, replacing exterior building lighting, replacing electrical panel boards, expanding the upgraded fire alarm, again, additional cabling for those wireless access points, some air handling units that are at the end of their life that need to be replaced, the mechanical controls, which will help with the student concern of too hot, too cold, replacing the domestic water piping, replacing the grease interceptor at the kitchen, and then, as Tanya mentioned, the auditorium lighting and sound that the district is managing. Peter, do you have anything you want to add from a budget standpoint about the high school?
Teresa, I'm just gonna real quick while he's walking up there, so just as a reminder, when we say we're replacing the bleachers in the upper gym, we are not replacing the bleachers that are on the stage, those are going to be removed, and so there won't be bleachers on the stage anymore. They won't be needed with the larger gym downstairs.
And before you jump in, can I ask about the doors and hardware, only 25% of them in the lower level? Does that mean the remaining doors and hardware are up to code and what we need to have a universal, great security?
Yeah.
One-key-all, however it works, right?
A lot of those were replaced in 2019, so some of it is, A, doors that are chipped and worn and damaged, but then to your point about the hardware being able to have that universal key, so anything that wasn't replaced in 2019. And there are some additional doors that are being added for security or security doors that need to be replaced, that are purely being replaced to be able to be tied into that security system, again, for either lockdown or being able to lock the building in the evenings.
So from a budget perspective for the high school, the SD drawings, that first set of drawings just came in last week, so we're getting to start looking at those, and then when the next phase for the middle and elementary school come out, we're gonna present a budget to the administrative team on where things are coming in across all three of the main schools. So, right now, we're in the process of pricing the high school, and we'll report that out when we get the pricing and the drawings for the DD set for the middle and elementary school.
And then just next steps, where we are in the process, so as I mentioned, we are through that schematic design phase, so the drawings that you've seen are that schematic level. We keep getting more and more detailed, we'll see a lot more from the engineers, the mechanical, electrical, plumbing, and working through the details of where the light switches on that... that wall compared to, you know, everything else that's going on that wall. So we're really in between that schematic design and design development phase right now. And then on the last slide, just bringing back that construction schedule. And we anticipate the elementary work and the middle school building work being out to bid early, late summer, early fall. And then that high school work would be completed from a design and engineering standpoint, late fall and out to bid before the winter holidays.
Thank you. Any other questions? Well, thank you so much. All right. And now, we will move on to, we heard about the new high school, and we will talk about our current high school with our high school student board rep, Erin.
Okay, um, sorry. So it's almost the end of the third quarter, and then it's also St. Patrick's Day today. And so today, Link did a St. Patrick's Day scavenger hunt for the freshmen during advisory. And then Interact was planning a basketball game during advisory on Thursday for March Madness, but it will now be moved to sometime next week because the boys are going to state that day. And that will be at the Kohl Center in the afternoon. And then, speaking of going to state, 13 members of forensics have currently qualified for states, for state, which will be on April 11th. And the whole visual art classic team is going to state for the critical thinking category along with Ian Slager, Peyton Porter, and Beth Body, who will be going for individual categories. And then for spring sports, track started last week, softball started today, baseball starts the 24th, girls soccer starts during spring break, and golf starts the 31st. And then finally, for the student rotarians, for March, they are Alex Berger and Abe Daniels.
Thank you. And my thought is, or I'm thinking right, is portfolio season going on for the seniors?
Um, they're over now, so interviews will be April 11th for those two.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you, Erin. Um, we will move on to Brianna and a policy update.
Yeah, so we met end of February, this is our first reading for these policies. You can kind of see in your notes there under the draft section to check out those. Some of them were, were things that we were kind of already doing, that Niola presented, other ones were more specifically some, you know, just various grammatical changes. Love that Kurt brought up a couple of questions, I'll let you ask your questions about those. And then a couple that we are going to potentially not need based off of things that we just don't have in the district as far as, you know, those smart sensor and monitoring technology pieces, so.
So the first question I had was on policy 2210, curriculum development. There's, I don't know how, it's under the second section of it, P subsection. This is a section on multicultural education that is stricken out, and the overview from Niola said that it was stricken out because there's another provision in policy 2131 that is, that covers that. And I, I went to 2131 to read the part, and I could find a smaller section that I don't feel is, is comparable to the one that's stricken out in 2210. So I would advocate for keeping the language in 2210, and then I don't know what we want to do with, with 2131.
So just to kind of respond to that, I was just quickly looking at the Niola update on that, and it just says that, also the removing the language was because it was trying to align with the Wisconsin statutes and not the curriculum standards. So I was just quickly looking up the statute, and I mean, you can decide what you'd like to. So the statute says, "At all grade levels, an understanding of human relations, particularly with regard to American Indians, Black Americans, Hispanics, Hmong Americans, and Asian Americans." So just, I think that's why they made that switch, was to align it back to the statute a little bit more clearly, and you can see when I read that, that in 2131, that's the exact line from the state statute.
Is it, is it more along the lines of using parallel language with the statute, like Black Americans instead of African Americans and American Indians instead of Native Americans? Or is it deeper than that?
So, in, in policy 2131, letter H under citizenship is a direct quote from the state statutes. So I think that was the attempt, was to try to match that up versus, looks like matching it to the state statutes and not the curriculum standards as outlined in PI-8 of the administrative code, so.
Is there anything in the state statute that says we couldn't add in some of the stricken language from 2210 into 2131? It, it's, it's a much more robust and, and deep statement about multiculturalism and understanding contributions from different groups in our society.
I don't think so, my only concern is I'd have to go back to the educational standards to make sure that aligns with what we're expected to teach, and I, I'd have to look that up, I don't know that often, so I'd have to dig into that portion a little bit more. I wouldn't want to put it in a policy and, and commit to us teaching a certain way, and then all of a sudden, the standards don't require us to teach it. So I, I can get back to you on that after I look into that a little bit.
Well, standards that require us to, don't, are not required to teach it, doesn't mean we shouldn't teach it. It seems to me like that's a flaw, and if we feel something's important, we could teach it if, as long as the standards don't prohibit us from teaching it.
Maybe a potential solution would be to take it back, this one policy, back to the policy committee, so, and then have that discussion there.
That's what I was gonna suggest, because I'm having trouble loading the different policies in board docs right now to be able to see what you're all referring to, other than just the little bits that we have in that document that's attached, so I think.
Yeah, maybe putting that back on the, back to the policy committee and then have the further discussion of that. Yep.
Okay, and then my second question was policy 5512, use of tobacco and nicotine by students. There is, the Niola overview says that they've added in a more in-depth discussion of understanding and respect for Native American use, ceremonial use of tobacco, and that section is in there except it's, and it's highlighted in green, like the one, like Niola highlighted sections that they added in, but it's also stricken out. And there's also provisions about response to policy violations and putting it more in a restorative perspective rather than just a punitive perspective. And I would advocate for those being included as well, instead of stricken out as they are.
Yep, and maybe add that to the policy committee discussion as well, so.
And I will plan to come to the next policy committee meeting.
So I guess in regards to that, then, looking at both of those, if we come to our second reading, we could potentially have a proposal that sets those aside for future look, so that we can have some time to dig into it a little deeper.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, is that everything? Any other questions?
I just had a simple question, I, I noticed that the tobacco, smoking cessation, is that done by the school district, or is that?
They do, I mean, Officer Johnson does do some work and some of the language with, you know, vaping and smoking, and then part of that's worked into the health curriculum as well.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions? Okay, moving on to the WASB convention report, for all those notes of people that have attended, so, who would like to start?
Well, I'll start. I, I did go to the finance one on Tuesday, the workshop, and I thought it was real good, it was well-attended, but what I, I did appreciate is, this time around, they allowed more time for table talk and breakout sessions, because there was just, it's astounding how, you know, each district has such a unique situation oftentimes, and just hearing how, you know, what others are thinking about in terms of some of the fiscal pieces was, was really good, yeah. So that, that was a real positive, and I thought this time around, there was some very relevant workshops that I attended, so I was pretty happy with the selection, I guess, of stuff. Although I will say, you know, sometimes you want to go to three in one hour, you know, you have to kind of pick.
I was gonna say, that's exactly what I was gonna say, I think there are so many great topics, so many great presenters with so much knowledge, I'm so glad to have other people who attended, so that I could say, oh, you're going to that one, I wanted that one too, I'm gonna go to this one, so then we can kind of discuss what was said and, and talk about the things that we learned. I think, again, this year, it was so great to network, I feel like every year, it's a little bit more networking with people you've seen from previous years and just checking in on how, you know, maybe their referendum did or didn't go, and, and just other school things, right, to see who's in your boat, how they're handling it, all the, all the details. And I think too, along the lines of continuing to learn the new things, right, they've got a little bit of everything, and I definitely appreciate that, and trying to pick the things that are interesting, could be applicable, or things that are applicable to us currently, so kind of doing a little bit of that. One of the things I've always continued to think about is, is how do we take this information, and what do we do with it now, right? We always have this share-out, which is great, and I appreciate that, because I, I love this convention, I, like I said, last year, I, I won the free ticket to go, so I, I love it, I, I shared that with them. But, but now, what do I do with it outside of sharing it with you and then kind of using it in the back of my brain as we come to various situations? And I think some districts had talked about how they have, like, board workshops afterwards, and so they pick out maybe a couple key things that they might want to focus on as a board in the upcoming year. So just hoping that we can consider what we might do with all of this knowledge that we've gained, right, because it's, it's three days of amazing learning, I mean, amazing keynote speakers, and then topics that are just super relevant and important in continuing the great things education's already doing.
I, you know, Brianna, I always think about that, because, you know, you go to a lot of sessions and you get a lot of learning, and sometimes it's from very large districts, and I think about like, how can I scale that back for our district? But more so, I think I always have, you know, that learning in the back of my head and looking for the right opportunity, because we do have a strategic plan in place, right? We've got the goals, but it might not be next year, but sometimes two years down the line, that opportunity will present itself, or it'll manifest itself in, you know, the goals that the board is taking on. So I, I like that idea of, you know, when, when that opportunity is appropriate, this might be something then that we can implement at that time.
Yeah, I, I also found that there's way too many sessions that sound great, and choosing is really difficult. The EdCon app that they have is super useful in, like, going through and, you know, beforehand and starring the ones that you might be interested, so you don't, they don't just get lost in a sea of, of sessions at a time, it really helps to choose. The music is always a highlight for me. We heard three fantastic high school music groups from around the state at the, each of the general sessions, and understand that Tanya is working on getting one of, you know, our music groups to apply for that, it'd be great to have Lake Mills group featured at the state convention. One of the things I did for the second time this year is represent the school board on, at the Wisconsin Association of School Boards Annual Delegate Assembly. And a couple of resolution highlights from that. There was a proposed resolution to decouple public and private school funding, and I found that the, the oversimplicity of the language of this resolution focused on, only on the claim that decoupling public school and private school funding in the state budget would alleviate property taxes. However, it, in not discussing other serious bad effects that decoupling would have on funding for public, public education, it was very misleading. Arizona and Florida implemented similar laws separating public and private school funding in their respective states, and the result was that funding for public education was decimated. So I spoke against this resolution, as did multiple other delegates, and it failed overwhelmingly. Another resolution of note was one deal, proposed resolution dealing with accountability and school student report card standards. The proposed resolution kind of centered on how student achievement is defined, and it defines student achievement as only GPA, excluding any other elements that could be considered, and I felt that was too narrow a definition for student achievement, this resolution also failed. Ken and I went to a, took a tour of the educational tour of the We Energies STEM Center at Milwaukee School of Engineering, and found it fascinating, they had different robotics fields there, they had a couple of classrooms, and then we did, we learned about the role of industrial engineers and improving systems and processes and working in all types of industries. And then we did a fascinating exercise with building airplanes out of Legos. And they did three rounds, we were in teams of four or five, and the first round, you just had to start, you couldn't talk or strategize or anything, just go. And we had three minutes, and my team managed to get four, only four of the 12 airplanes finished. The second round, we were allowed to strategize, and then we got 10 of the 12 done. And the third round, we were allowed to further strategize as well as to sort the pieces, which at the start of each exercise, the pieces are all just jumbled in a, in a box, and you can't open the box and do anything in the first two rounds until the time starts. The third round, we were allowed to have, have like a minute to sort the pieces, and then two minutes to put together, and then my team got all of them done. So I thought it was just a fascinating exercise in look into, you know, the inner workings of, of the processes that elect, that industrial engineers deal with.
Admittedly, I, my, I was a bottlenecked on my team, so-
You were what?
By the third round, I was, you know, off to the perimeter, you know-
Oh, no.
Doing a very simple thing, so.
Well, the other thing is that there was teams of four or five, and I thought that that wasn't quite representative, because we had four on our team, other teams had five, and like, well, but then somebody brought up the law of diminishing returns, maybe four was better than five, so I don't know. The keynote speaker at the second general session was an author, speaker, and artist, Sam Glenn, and he was fascinating, he painted a wolf while he was speaking, and then he gave away that painting and, I don't know, eight or 10 others to, you know, drawing of names, and then they made clear, well, this is on behalf of your district, so if you win, it goes to your district. He had a, a whole lot of great sayings, his kind of tagline was, "Grow through what you, grow through what you go through." Talked about the importance of saying, "Thank you." And complain less, compliment more. So I thought those were, those were interesting. There was one thing I missed here. The keynote speaker at the first general session, Clint Swindell, from our leadership development company called Verbalocity, had a great suggestion for a different greeting than "How are you?" He said that when you say "how are you," it often just elicits negative information. So he suggested greet someone by saying, "Tell me something positive, tell me something good." And that's a way to elicit more positivity, I thought that was a really good insight. I thought that was a really good insight. And then finally, the exhibit hall is always interesting. I made time to walk around and I talked to various vendors of field design, field turf, and field lighting to gather information in preparation for school board discussions about potential of building a new baseball diamond on the high school campus or at a city park. So that's a little synopsis of what I learned at the state education convention.
Thank you. All right, is there anything else? All right, well, then we will move on to administrative reports and Dr. Olson.
So a quick shout out to our high school art teacher, Kieran Kirking. If you notice, the two art displays on the side, it is youth arts month. And Kieran took it upon herself to display some student artwork. So if you didn't, take a look at it on the way in, please, at the end of the meeting. Take a look at our talented artists that we have at the high school. The work is incredible. And we thank Kieran for taking the extra time to do this, to put the displays up. So with that, I am going to introduce the team of Luke Stair, who is our Director of Technology, Aaron Seachlog, our Director of Teaching and Learning, and Nate Grundle, our middle school assistant principal, who also works with us on technology integration. And they're going to present a plan to move the high school to a one-on-one Chromebook. How was I saying, to one-on-one Chromebooks? So I know this started with our discussion about cell phone policies and things like that and the way that students use cell phones during the day. Because right now, for a lot, that's their only alternative. So these three really worked together to come up with a plan to present to the board tonight. And then when we get to that point, Tasha will talk about some of the, how we're gonna pay for this, so.
Hello again. So we're here, we're gonna talk about a potential plan to bring the high school to one-to-one. So if we go to the next slide, I put together just a quick kind of, like, overview. Here's our agenda. So first and foremost, I want to, you know, mention that this actually, this came from our whole district tech team, which does have representation from every building. And for the past three years, we've been talking about the inequity in which our high schoolers don't have a one-to-one device, but we're one-to-one in grades one, eight. And we finally, you know, we're like, okay, we have to move forward, you know, after watching kids type essays on phones and hearing them, a couple kids mentioned that during some of their, like, their senior portfolio interviews. It was like, okay, like, we can do better. And so Nate really got us started. He created a great document to organize us in terms of what has to get done. He and I met, we developed a timeline. We got Luke on board to start helping us with, you know, the actual technology component of it and what that all takes. We will go through some more information about one-on-one. We'll talk about the cost piece. Again, Luke has a phenomenal spreadsheet where he worked out some different scenarios. We'll talk about our proposal and a projected timeline as well. So our rationale, as I mentioned, so everyone in grades one through eight has, they have a device. In grades one through four, they stay, like, they're just kind of in that grade for so many years, and then they get switched out, but they still are one-to-one. As some of you who have had children in the past few years go through the middle school, fifth graders, we purchase new for fifth grade, and then those computers, those Chromebooks follow them throughout. The high school, like I said, they have, they have phones or they have a variety of carts in which they can, sometimes they use those for classes, they can check them out. But when we did the inventory to determine, is there enough for every kid? The answer's no. So that also impacts us from, like, the assessment component is making sure that we have enough devices for all of our state assessments and ones that all are up to date and all working the same. And when you have kids in, like, the junior class and they're using three different, like, devices, that makes it a little bit more tricky for our proctors, right, to help troubleshoot. You know, the other pieces is, right now, some of our high school families, some of them are able, some families are able to purchase devices for their kids. We also have families where they can't. And if they have to choose between, I'm gonna get you a cell phone so I can communicate with you and you can access the internet, or I'm gonna get you a Chromebook, a lot of them are probably going to lean towards a cheaper cell phone because they have a communication way. So not being one-to-one presents an equity issue for some of our students who can't afford to purchase their own Chromebook. Additionally, there's no oversight. So on any device, including cell phones and things that are brought from home, like, we can't control that as a district. So at the middle school, on our school Chromebooks, a student's on an inappropriate website, it's blocked. Or it gets, if it's something that they got by, like, Nate and Chuck get an alert and then they get to have some really meaningful and sometimes awkward conversations. We can't do that at the high school. And I think that what we find is that can lead to the, like, accessing inappropriate content, but it also can lead to more opportunities for things like cyberbullying, where they're able to access more content than what we would normally allow them to access on school Up next, Luke is gonna kind of walk you through the difference between if we were to buy Chromebooks versus lease Chromebooks and kind of what the advantages are.
So when we were looking at this, we wanted to kind of explore all of our options. So we don't have that spreadsheet in this presentation, but I believe it's linked for you all. If you want to take a look at it along the way, a lot more information. But we really looked at three options. We looked at just adding an additional grade or two in this first year of purchasing devices. We looked at purchasing devices for first, fifth, and freshman, and then leasing one class for three years, the 10th grade class. And we looked at leasing everybody. And so we'll talk a little bit more about what those numbers look like in a minute, but kind of just giving a contrast between the two. So if we purchased the devices, we would purchase them in that first year, and they would have them for four years. When we're done with that, if we don't do a buyback, which that's a discussion that I think is still somewhat ongoing, currently in our eighth grade, we had a buyback. So at the end of that period, they could purchase the device if they wanted to keep it or if they had been paying for it along the way, I guess is how that worked. Apologize, I'm mixing up different districts, what we've done different places. But anyway, we're looking at kind of phasing that out in favor of having those devices. So currently, like, the fourth grade devices, when they're done there, they roll back into our spare pool. They run into, we use those devices currently in the high school for testing as we need extra devices, that sort of thing. So if we purchase them, we use them for four years, assigned to that student. And then after that, we have an additional year or two, usually not under warranty anymore, you know, potentially becomes unusable if they're broken, but it gives us that option to use them for other things. And because we have those devices, we don't need to purchase additional spares. So we keep a certain percentage extra that we purchase every year for students who come in new, so they get a brand-new Chromebook when they come in. Say, you know, you have somebody come in halfway through their fifth grade year, they're getting a new Chromebook out of the box. They're not getting something somebody else has already damaged and used for a while. But as far as the, I broke my Chromebook, it's going out for repair, what do I get in the meantime? That's what we're talking about for spare devices. They're not, it's something that we already have, we can hand it to them. If it gets broken, it's not under warranty, but it's not a huge deal because we have these devices. Leases, on the other hand, primarily because of cost, we looked at fair market value leases. And at the end of that lease, we would either return it to the vendor or buy it out at whatever they determined to be fair market value at the time. We wouldn't have those devices after the fact, so we really don't have that asset anymore that's worth anything. I forgot to mention on the buy side, if we decide that we have too many spare devices, we want to get rid of some, these companies will buy them back because either they're going to, you know, refurb them and give them to somebody, or what's more likely is a lot of these places will take old Chromebooks, tear them all apart, and then resell the parts for people that are trying to maintain their own devices. With leases, obviously, we wouldn't have that. So I think that's really the key. I think as a team, we kind of discussed it, and we're leaning toward the buying option. It just seems to make sense financially and practically. But if we can go to the next slide, again, that spreadsheet has a lot more detail on it, but this is kind of the summary. So it kind of shows, the orange line here is the lease cost, the blue line is the purchase For each year, I included a 3% inflation increase for both lease and purchase. That number is obviously arbitrary. And as I'm sure many of you are aware, with the potential of tariffs, I know in the technology world, everybody's like, we can't tell you what it's gonna be a month out, much less three months, six months, a year. So things could change. But this is based on the quote we have today for purchasing and leasing, and then a 3% increase every year. Once we get past year five, I picked an arbitrary number of 121 devices. That's an average of what we've had for students. If we look at this graph, though, you'll notice the first three years, leasing is substantially less expensive. And the reason for that is essentially, you're only paying for a quarter of the cost of the device. So that first year, instead of when I purchase devices, I pay for 100% of those devices of those, say, three grades, year one, in this case, four grades for year one, because we're, we were talking about purchasing for freshmen and for sophomore class. And then we've got carts in the high school currently to recycle into our junior class. And then we have some spares left over from previous years that we would try to refurb and use for our senior class. So we're trying to make use of all the devices we have currently, but then those oldest devices given to the oldest grades, so they're not in service very many years, and we try to keep those in as good a condition for the students as possible. But with that said, purchasing and leasing, then, the lease would be three grade levels for four years and then one grade level for three years. So those first, fifth, and ninth grade for four years, and then 10th grade for the three-year term. Purchasing is a little bit different because it has four grades of purchasing in year one, and then the second year would be three grades, and every year after would just be three grades. I will point out, in 2027, '28, you see in the blue line, there's a fairly significant dip. That's not an error. That just happens to be, we have a smaller group of students in our first, fifth, and ninth grade classes. So if I were just going down the list, year number one has 466 devices if we were to purchase them all upfront. That's an extra grade compared to what we would normally do, so that number is high. Years two and following, we have 382, 334, that's the low year right there, 360 and 354. So you can see after that one down year, it's fairly consistent for the next couple of years. But then, once we hit year five, I'm using a static number for both leasing and purchasing. So we just don't have skyward data projecting out 10 years in the future what our enrollment is going to be. But those first three years, I think leasing looks very attractive. But you have to figure in that, again, we're paying for a quarter of them, year one, half in year two, three quarters in year three, and it isn't until year four, so that '28, '29 school year is when we would really see the comparison. What's the difference in cost between purchasing and leasing? And year four, you can see leasing is more expensive than purchasing, and it pretty well stays there after year four because then we no longer have the benefit of rolling in devices that we already have, you know, our carts and our spares and all of that that we would use to offset the cost of existing devices in year one that don't exist once we get four years down the road.
Is there a different cost analysis for lease versus purchase with repairs? Like, if we leased, does that mean that we have, like, anything happens, they'll fix it? And or, like, how does that work?
Yeah, so what we've been doing, we just kind of made a change this year, had some less-than-great turnaround time with a previous company. So this past school year, over the summer, we moved to a new company, and they've been so far, so good. But one of the real advantages that they gave us is they roll in screen repairs at no additional cost. So we've been struggling with that. I know in the tech department, in the middle school especially, with, you know, how much of that is the school covering? How much of it is being passed on to the families? It's always a hard thing. Was this intentional? Was it accidental? Like, how did this happen? But anyway, so we switched to this new company, and they are providing us pricing for both purchasing and leasing. So this pricing that we're looking at is assuming the exact same four-year warranty or three years, I guess, on the three-year lease. It basically covers all the accidental damage, zero deductible for the one-time cost or cost split over the term of the lease.
Okay.
So yeah, practically, it's a pretty apples-to-apples comparison as far as the benefits that we get as far as that warranty.
Okay. So then, I guess, just to clarify, if we would choose to purchase, it would not be an additional cost to repair all the purchased?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. So regardless of whether we were to purchase or to lease, we would have a warranty for the term of the device. That's an additional cost, but it's included in these numbers. That ends up being, again, this year, about $421 per device. It's what we're estimating here based on these numbers.
The only difference is the leased ones, we eventually give back to them, whereas the purchased ones, after the warranty, we just, like, hope that they work.
Yep. And then for what it's worth, they didn't give me a, you know, interest rate. They gave me a, here's the dollar amount for the four years. But calculating it out, currently, it's about a 6.99% additional cost to lease because they're spreading that payment out over four years. And I think that's where you start to see, once we get to a full complement of lease, the price for leasing is higher because that cost per year, annual cost actually is higher. It just doesn't look that way in the first few years because you're spreading that, kicking that cost down the road a little bit and only paying a quarter of the cost year one. So our next slide here, I think I've covered most of this. So yeah, initially, leasing appears to be cost-effective. And again, like I mentioned, that's because you're spreading that cost for the four years or for the single year if we purchased, over four years. So year one, you're only paying for a quarter, and each year, you're adding a quarter until we get to that four-year mark where you're paying for all of them. If we were to purchase, we would, this very first year is higher because we would be doing first, fifth, ninth, and 10th grade. In subsequent years, we would plan on doing first, fifth, and ninth and have that four-year rotation, like I think most districts do for that. Over time, leasing becomes more expensive. Like I said, that fourth year is really where it catches up. And then if you're just assuming a 3% increase, it pretty well just stays a little bit higher forever after. The only other cost that we see potentially being necessary with this whole project would be AC adapters for some of the devices coming from carts. So we're gonna salvage whatever we can from our existing carts and that sort of thing. But I just didn't want to leave that off because that potentially is a cost that we would incur if we had to buy some additional power adapters because obviously, each student needs to have something to charge the Chromebook. And then as far as the funding, we're gonna discuss that a little bit later. Nate's gonna come up and finish.
I want to thank Tasha and Aaron and Luke meeting with me. Proposal, just kind of summarizing all of that, that's a lot of information, a lot of data. And Luke's really good at putting that stuff together. So the idea here is to reallocate what we have in our high school. We have some Chromebook carts in our high school and our fourth graders to our juniors and seniors for the two, one year or two years that they have left in the building. Those devices will work for that time. For next year, purchasing new devices for our freshmen and sophomores, that's a new expense that we would not have in the budget right now. So freshmen, sophomores, we go to the following year, '26 and '27, we would just be purchasing for three years. So we have like a one year. We have to fill in that sophomore class next year with devices to make sure every kid has a device in the high school. And then the next thing on our proposal is just to provide our fifth through seventh grader families, we know we have that tech fee in there, provide an opportunity to buy out their devices, because we've already communicated that with them to make sure what that looks like going forward. We haven't figured out numbers or things like that, but giving them the opportunity to still purchase it because that's been a policy we had in place already. And then, like I said, in '26, '27, we'd be back to three grade levels of purchasing new devices. That's just one more grade level than what we are currently purchasing because we purchase for an elementary school and the fifth graders every single year. If I go to the proposal and our kind of our project timeline, if we were to pass this and go forward, which I hope we do, go to the next slide, please. So we did a lot of work here in February and March of, like, figuring out devices we have. We drew up the timeline for implementation, pricing of devices, which Luke reported on, drafting our communication plan of who we need to communicate, all our stakeholders, because there is a lot of stakeholders that we need to communicate to make sure that when we make this step from our teachers to our parents to our families to our administration. That all happens in February here. We are sitting here at the board meeting, and it's on our agenda. We've done the inventory. Moving forward as a communication... Moving forward as communication, handbook updates for our technology use, so that all three schools are able to use the same handbook going forward. So there's not a different handbook in each place. That's consistent with consequences and acceptable use and all of the policies that we have in place. Communication stakeholders, updates of fees in '25 and '26, and Tasha will talk more about that. June and July would be our ordering of the devices, getting them set up from our tech department. And then August, September is our implementation. So handing out devices, making sure teachers are ready for it, training in GoGuardian, which is our web filtering software that we use at the middle schools, just so everyone knows how to kind of monitor devices as they go through them. So that is our proposed timeline. And then next slide, some potential questions.
So the other part that, as we've been talking, we were just trying to draft up some of the questions that we could already foresee coming. And so we've put a few of those up there with some answers, and if you have questions about those, I'm happy to answer it. I don't also, I don't think I need to necessarily read them all to you, but I think overall, it's a fairly solid plan, if we're able to find a way to make it work in order to just have some educational and technology equity for all of our students in the district. Are there any last questions about this proposal?
Thanks, Aaron. I'm just a slight, I'm not as familiar with who has what in the district in terms of laptops, but is the end goal to have every student have a laptop and then fund that through a technology fee? Is that?
So...
Or I guess what I'm saying is...
Yeah, so the...
Do parents still have to contribute to the...
So that is such a great question, and we did some learning this school year, and Tasha's going to talk a little bit more about that.
So with the tech fees that we administer right now at the middle school, those students, you know, if they're in four years, they're paying that every year, and then they're, they have that device to take with them. So they're paying for something that is going to be theirs. So we're able to administer that fee. In this scenario, if we were to purchase, it would be, they wouldn't be leaving with those devices. Now, it's an option if we want to pursue potentially letting them purchase them at the end, and that's something we've kind of discussed, but that fee would be very minimal. But in terms of the annual fee that we've been administering, we would no longer be able to administer, because it isn't their device. So that would go away. And I know that that question here is, we were waiting, but since we've made this, that answer has come, so.
Yeah.
It's something that we would forego.
So for parents that, you know, might struggle to afford a laptop, and our goal is everybody gets one ultimately, it sounds like, is there a path for them through this at all?
So the district will own the devices?
Yeah.
There won't be any fee for parents.
So currently, Ken, I have opted out to purchase my middle schooler's device. So I think that was one thing that was maybe not quite understood by a lot of parents, that they even had that option. They thought it was this purchase to own. And so, yes, a lot of parents are in this, you know, category to own it at the end of their middle school year, but I have opted out of that, and some parents have. And so then, yes, my kid won't go home with one at the end. And then I think if we propose a high school one-to-one, I'd be really curious to see if anybody would consider it at the end of an eighth-grade year, knowing that they potentially have a new one-on-one come high school every year. Because, I mean, the lifespan of a Chromebook is just not very long, right? Which is kind of why we opted out of not wanting it. So yeah, I'd be very curious to see if anybody would even consider that option. One of the things I think that I would wonder in this whole process, love that we could get this equity piece in there, have the opportunity for testing. I think maybe some parents might wonder if we are moving to one-on-one, does that mean our screen time could potentially increase, right? Because I think there's a lot of this, like, we want to make sure we're still doing lots of different types of learning, not just learning off of a screen. I think it's, at the high school level, it's just going to change the screen that they're using. So instead of them pulling out their phone, where they have access to anything and everything, depending on what their parents may or may not have set up as monitoring, they now instead have their school Chromebook, which is school-monitored and school-controlled in terms of what can be accessed. So could they, I think the screen time is just switched in that case.
Just because there's, right now, there's students that are parents and families that are purchasing their own and taking it, whether it's a phone or a computer, so.
So is this one step towards also putting some parameters around cellphone usage as well? Is that seen as coupled with this?
Just from a board perspective, I think this is the first step that we have to do to make a cellphone policy at the high school level, so.
Okay.
I was wondering if we have thought about the increased cost and time of staff that will deal with the Chromebooks, like, because as a library media specialist, kids come to me when they need loaners, when they need things being fixed, like, so with more Chromebooks basically in circulation, how are we going to deal with, dealing with the issues that arise? Do we have increased time for those people to deal with that? I guess that's just like a cost thing that will eventually probably arise.
I think that that's a, probably a multi-pronged. So our elementary school and our middle school both have a library media specialist who is going to, that fills that similar role. We also have one at the high school who would fill that similar role. We also have our tech team, plus the warranty to help with anything that's broken. And we have, you know, additionally, like, if they need a loaner, like, that's all, it is handled through the library, but there's multiple people in there who can assist with that.
Okay. And I think additionally to that, and maybe Luke, correct me if I'm wrong, but some of the carts that the students have, that they're repairing and working on those as well, so those would kind of, right? That would kind of replace that, that...
And Brenda at the high school helps with some of that, so this would actually, I mean, I think it's kind of a trade-off.
Okay.
Not having to manage cart things and having those instead.
Is there any other questions? I see that it, from one of our action items, it's in the future time of tonight, it's to approve a purchase of, or a method of going for this route. So just make, think about it in a few minutes, so.
Should we ask questions regarding that at this point?
I think, yeah, this is the time to have the conversation.
I was just going to, yeah, what was mine? I saw that there's one, like, do we do bids? Or we're, like, Luke, you mentioned the current company we have, we're happy with, because, you know, they include the screen damage, things like that, so...
Yeah, correct, so we...
Have you compared prices, I guess, continually?
Yes, yes. So things are pretty static. I mean, other than, you know, tariffs and things, you're talking probably, you know, somewhere between $10 and $30 difference between any given competitors. Like, there's, these are just such low-margin items that they're not really, there's not a whole lot of difference, depending on who you go to. We did look at a couple of vendors, just to get some general idea, and everybody was fairly similar. I'll say the big advantage with going with this company is they're not out of bounds, in my opinion, and that's obviously, without you all looking at each one of those things, you're relying on me to give you that report, but I feel like they're in line with everybody as far as the cost of the device, and the advantage of having that warranty piece, which is not the case with a lot of other vendors, puts them pretty clearly in the lead, in my opinion. You know, that's, I've been at a district where we did all the repairs in-house, and that's a full-time job for somebody, just keeping up with those. So having a third-party company do that, and I mean, it's little things, like this company also integrates with our ticketing system. So I think from, you know, just overall perspective, I think they've been a good fit, and we definitely have the, you know, we don't have a quote from the old company, but we have a general idea of what they were charging. This new company is not substantially different in any way. In fact, the cost went down a little bit moving to this new company from the old one.
Okay. So I guess that kind of leads into my question, because I noticed that we have the one in there, right? And so when it comes to us, you know, looking at them, I guess, when do we, when does that three bid come into play? Because I think sometimes it can hurt us a lot, right? Because we continue to ask people for bids, and they're like, oh, you're not going to go with us anyways, so what does it matter? But at the same point, it helps give that cost perspective of things. So how, I guess, how does that factor into this only seeing one versus sometimes we see three?
So in this instance, with Chromebooks or anything that we're buying, multiple items of whatever the item might be that's under that threshold, so if it's under the $10,000, then per our policy and compliance with the policy, we don't go to bid for. So in this instance, we're buying so many that that dollar, that threshold is over, but it's only that one per item. So that might be on that, you know, the way we track fixed assets as well as that, is that threshold of one item. So in the past, we haven't gone to the three bids with things like this, but if it's an item over $10,000, then we'll go to the three bid.
Okay, thanks for clarifying.
Unless, unless the board has approved that we don't because of a unique situation.
Okay.
And where, where does this sit in the overall budget?
Sure, yeah. So with this, I know that you'll, you'll see that dollar amount of just over $196. So that is for the entire purchase. Now, obviously, we're replacing Chromebooks every year for students, and every year, that that dollar amount fluctuates, depending on how many we're placing per that grade level, and how many students there are, how many, the percentage of extras that we might be purchasing. So just to kind of give you an idea of what we've kind of put in that budget line item in the past, this past year, we had, we budgeted just over $160,000, $160,000. In the last two years, it was $123,000 and $175,000. So it's really within, it's still within that realm for this next year of what we've budgeted in the past. Now, under my report, we are going to, I'm, I am, I've asked Luke to kind of talk about some of the needs that the technology department is going to be having, that's above and beyond what we have in our budget and what we've had in our budget for the technology department over the past five-plus years. So with that being said, there are going to be additional costs that are coming, but from when it, when it comes to the replacement of Chromebooks for students, it's still within that general range of dollars that we've been budgeting in that line item.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay.
If, I guess, if, would it, if, if we would approve then the 55.8, I think that's for the first year for the rent, the leasing versus the $196 for the purchase. You said it, the pluses and, I mean...
So if you're the lease, that's, that amount is what you're paying just for that year, right?
Okay.
Like, you have, you've only paid for, as Luke was saying, a quarter of the device. So it looks a lot better in year one, two, three, because you're only paying for a quarter of the device every year, where the number is higher in year one for purchasing, because you purchased the whole device, and now you own the whole device. But in the end, those leased devices will actually be more expensive. We'll end up spending more in four years than we would have if we would have just purchased them, which is why our recommendation was to purchase.
Okay.
And another point with purchasing versus leasing is, you know, once you choose a path, that's the path you're going to want to stay on. And if we were to choose a lease path, because it looks, you know, it looks great right now, it's hard to get out of that if eventually we say, this isn't for us, and we no longer want to lease, and now we need to buy however many Chromebooks or devices to get back into kind of a purchase path. So it's something to think about and from a, from a really long-term standpoint, rather than just what it might look like this next year or two.
So then if we would go down that purchased path, right, it's over what we have, you know, typically budgeted, do you have that magic spreadsheet we talked about at our last finance meeting with where we would be at?
I do. But I think let's, I think we should continue in our conversation with the other pieces too, before we go there.
Okay.
So then, and then the last question, as far as the budget of $196, does that, or what, what has been budgeted previously accounts for parents buying it at the middle school or potentially leasing to own? Does that, would that then change the numbers if you take out all the fees that we had been receiving?
So sure, those fees are going to offset, right, the costs of it. So in the past, and I didn't look much further than the last couple of years, because I feel the most recent is going to be the most relevant to this conversation, but those fees have been around $14,000. There's been some buyout fees, because we've had students that, you know, maybe were in eighth grade when we started this, so then they actually did a buyout fee. So there's a combination of the buyout fees and those annual fees that they were paying. So it's anywhere between $14,000, $17,000 that offset the cost that we would no longer have annually.
I just had a thought, too, when we're looking at long-term, if we felt like we were over budget in being able to purchase, to me, it makes more sense to have high school kids have a one-to-one device, because they are on Google Classroom, and it's, they're older, they're getting ready for adulthood. So I feel like if we're seeing this as an issue, eventually, maybe we could have where K12 does not have a one, one device, and they only use them for their testing, or, you know, it just seems like at some point, we could flip this to where it makes more sense to not have the littles with one-to-one, but have the high schoolers. But I think at this point, getting everyone devices, seeing how it goes, is it utilized in a way that makes sense? And if it isn't, we can revisit it later.
Well, and I think along those lines of, I would imagine or hope that the littles are using them less, so maybe in this system, it could be accounted for, and they've got more of the ones that are, have one or two years' life left, right? And so we don't necessarily need a new purchase at, what was it, first grade, kindergarten, whatever was on the screen, focusing, like you said, more on those high school kiddos.
Yeah. And then just one final question, the $196, the graph that was shown, that, that was, is that just for the new purchases for those, the high school kids? Or is that just for the purchases across the all grades?
All grades.
Okay, okay, that's, I just want to make, clarify, yep. Okay. Okay. All right, then are there any other questions about that? And potentially, it'll lead right into your discussion, Tasha, as far as the other items, so.
Sure. So, thank you. So what we're going to talk about next is a little bit of kind of those other needs that the technology department has, as well as the transportation department. We'll start with the technology department, just because that's the, you know, discussion we're on right now. A lot of the discussions that Luke and I have been having is the long-term budget of the technology department. And as I had said earlier, it has not increased in the last five-plus years by more than $50,000. I think it was $48,000. And really, those, as we know, inflation alone is more than that. So there's really been some, I guess we could call it pinching in certain areas, and some sacrifices that we've had to make, and the department has had to make. So Luke put together another one of his really great spreadsheets and showed us, you know, if, if this was ideal, this is what it would look like. And of course, I said, okay, we'll, we'll talk about that. And it's, and we talked about it more, and we talked about it more, and now it's time to talk about it with everybody. So I really asked Luke to just kind of give us a high level of, you know, what he's seeing, what we're, what we've missed out on, the needs that we have, just kind of a really basic start of a conversation, so the board really understands kind of where we're at with the needs in the department. So with that being said, Luke, if you want to come on up and take it away.
Sure. So I guess I'll try to start with a little bit of a more broad approach, and then talk more specifically about, you know, what we've been talking about potentially for this upcoming fiscal year. So just generally, you know, there's, you walk into a school and you look around, and there's technology everywhere that you're looking at, there's stuff you're not seeing too. And I think, you know, we've done a pretty good job overall, in my opinion, in past years in keeping up with, like, the staff devices, with the exception of last year, we'll get to that in a minute, but done a pretty good job keeping up with staff devices. Frankly, pretty good job with the student devices. There's a little bit of, you know, sometimes carts got pushed back and whatnot, but, but overall, like, compared to the infrastructure, I feel like a lot of our devices, we've been doing a really good job with. Infrastructure, on the other hand, tends to be in a lot worse shape, and then when you start talking about our classroom technology, just the number to actually keep up what we're doing. So the spreadsheet Tasha was talking about, I kind of took, again, some of its estimates, because some of it's exact and some of it's estimates, but to take everything from, you know, those screens on the wall in the elementary school, to, you know, our servers and our network switches and our battery backups and, and, you know, devices, computers, desktops and laptops and Chromebooks, and, and putting all of that together, like, everything I could think of from a technology perspective into a single, like, here's how many years we anticipate things working, and then dividing it out, and what's, what would our annual budget be? And like she said, that number is substantially larger than our current budget. So I think, you know, it feels like in the past, we maybe haven't accounted for replacing some of this stuff. We put a TV screen up, and we just, it's up there, and that's great, but nobody's thinking forward to like, okay, what happens in seven years or 10 years when we have to do something with it? And then those things end up being emergencies, you know, things have failed. So what I would love to see, and obviously, I'm not having to deal with the money side of things as much, balancing the overall budget, but what I would love to see is trying to find the compromise there between what are we willing to maintain, and if we're not willing to maintain it, maybe we need to cut back in some areas. And if we're not willing to maintain it, maybe we need to cut back in some areas. Or maybe we just need to increase the budget to cover everything that we're trying to do currently. Getting into more specifics for like this year, I mentioned staff devices. So last year.
Just for this coming budget year or this current year?
Yes, this coming budget year.
Okay, got it.
And I'll get into why that is here momentarily. Some of this stuff potentially could come out of this this budget year. When we talk about staff devices, those aren't tied to federal funding, so those are easier. But when I came in, we had some catch up to do with licensing for a number of reasons. We were under licensed in certain aspects. So we ended up increasing our licensing budget line item substantially, just to kind of get where that's Microsoft licensing, that's our antivirus and security software, backup software. There's a few of those things that, again, I I don't know entirely what happened there and where, you know, I know we worked with some vendors that did a lot of work with the technology as well. So I think there may have been some balls drop on the vendor side with getting things renewed. But anyway. So that number went up fairly significantly last year. And in order to make the budget work overall, we ended up deferring middle school staff devices. We said, well, we don't have the budget to do that. We can make them limp along for another year. We're kind of back in that same situation this year where we're looking at the at the budget and it's like, I I still don't know where that money's coming from. And this year would have been the year to do high school devices. So in my proposal to the team, I would like to try to catch up on those middle school devices and then also do those high school devices this year. And just to talk briefly about some of the things we're talking about to try to lower the long term costs. And this is something that probably as long as I'm here, I'm going to be on that soapbox because I think it's very easy for us to look at what's next year or what's the year after. And I really want to try to think about what's five years down the road because I think we put ourselves in bad positions by kicking that can down the road sometimes. So again, you guys obviously get to decide what we do as a district. But I I will tell you, when I present, I'm going to be pushing for long term solutions more often than I do short term solutions. But the couple of things we looked at, so we had been on a three year cycle for staff devices, buying new laptops for a building like elementary or middle or high school every third year. So every year we were doing some building and it was a three year cycle. The other thing we were doing is we were buying the manufacturer accidental damage warranty. So that adds a fairly significant cost. Manufacturer warranties are not inexpensive. It did mean that anytime we had a broken screen or, you know, the the coach left their laptop in the gym and a ball came through and took off the entire screen, we just shipped it all in a box and said, hey, Dell, this is your problem. Here, fix it for us. And that's nice. But looking at the numbers, it looks like, you know, over the cost of of that, over the course of that five years. So my thought was, we can get slightly higher end devices and spread that cost over five years. So we're only replacing devices once in five years, so once every three years. That will save us some money over that time period. And then the other thing we talked about this year, and I've had discussions with my team, just making sure, guys, can we handle this? But I think we're going to try to bring device repair for staff computers in house. We've been spending about, well, just for this next year, I figured it's about 75,000 dollars over the course of that five year period that we would spend above and beyond what the cost of the device is for repairs. And judging from the last two years, and this is only my second year, so I only have that data. But it doesn't seem like we're having that high a percentage of breakage for staff. So if we allocate some small portion of that, 15,000 a year is what we would basically be saving. You know, if I put one or 2,000 a year into a pool to say, this is for parts, if we need to repair things, I think we could not have to spend that money. And then it's just a matter of my staff's time to do those repairs. But again, I think based on the last couple of years, our average has been somewhere between seven and 10 staff device repairs a year. So in the grand scheme of things, those seven to 10 devices are not worth the the dollar amount. So those are just some specific things that we've been trying to do to balance that, you know, trying to make sure we're staying up on a replacement cycle, but also try to lower those costs over time so we're not spending more money than we need to. But anyway, our proposal, my proposal to them was to see about catching up and doing middle school and high school. This year are it would be about 195,000 that we would need to do those two two grade levels. The other thing that is somewhat pressing in that staff devices, we could basically do anytime. It would be for next school year, but if we had money at the end of the year and said, we want to buy them tomorrow, we could do that. And like I mentioned before, tariffs can influence some of this. So the numbers I have today, we don't know what those are going to be, not that that can entirely run our lives, but but we just keeping that keeping that in mind as we're talking about numbers that that could be impacted down the road. But the next fiscal year thing is we have E-rate federal money for technology specific items. And we have approximately 124,000 in real dollars of reimbursement. I could get into the how E-rate budget works and the horrible confusion that they the hoops they make you jump through for that. But at the end of the day, we have about 124,000 and some odd dollars of E-rate money that if we don't use it this year, this is the last year of the five year budget cycle, it goes away. However, in order to get that money, we have to spend our 40%. And so the way I propose that we do that is through replacing some of our network switches. And that's also a very could be a very long discussion. I can talk about network switches for a long time. But just kind of the short version is we have switches in this district that were end of life in 2015, in 2018, in 2020, and in 2022. The majority of those switches were either in 2018, that's 14 or 2015, sorry, that's 14 of them, or 2022, that's 19 of them. So we we have a number of things that are fairly significantly past their standard life. And we are currently dealing with failures. So it kind of coincidental timing. But just last Thursday, I got a call at the end of the day from the elementary school, entire fourth grade wing phones aren't working. We go up there and look and sure enough, a dead switch in the switch stack in that closet. So, you know, we've been able to patch things together and and, you know, disconnect things that aren't critical, ports that maybe aren't in use all the time and make things work. But as I've as I've told them, I'm concerned about that catastrophic failure event where we have things go wrong and we just can't do anything and we have no network. And as much as, you know, we presented on this one to one and we talk about, you know, all the technology for our students, network switches are that underlying, they connect everything. So all your cameras, all your access points for wireless, all your computers, all your phones, all of that runs through those switches. That's how you get internet. That's how you get connection to our file servers, to Skyward, to all of that. So without those pieces, that's that's the core, about as low level as you can get of the core of our network. So I guess all that to say is they're they're pretty important to the network functioning properly. That being said, that did go out to bid because that would be purchased through E-rate. So we were required to do a 470. I wrote an RFP that was out there for 30 days and we waited for responses. Didn't get a lot of responses, but did get one that, again, in my opinion, is a fairly competitive offer for what they're getting, switches and management. And we'd be looking at approximately needing approximately 160,000 from the district to get that 124,000 and some odd dollars from the federal government. And that would cover all of our switches. And I'll put the plug in there that I've done my best in the numbers for those to account for things like the new construction. So I'm sure that's going to be a discussion going forward of how we make that work. But some portion of that potentially would be covered with referendum dollars for the new locations that we're adding. But obviously, when you're buying things like this, you want to give them the here's the full number. So you take advantage of all those discounts for bulk purchases and things.
So just to clarify.
Yes.
The cost of the switches then would be 160 plus 124? Or would we be getting a rebate on what the after we spend the 160, we'd be getting 124,000 back?
So the total amount is those two numbers put together. So it's that I should have had that written down. I don't have the total on my head. But yes, if you add those two numbers together, that's the full amount of the switch replacement. And we would anticipate doing SPI reimbursement, which is the vendor files for the reimbursement. So we don't have to pay the full amount upfront. We pay our portion, that 160, then the vendor files and they get their 124 later. But to do that, that pushes that out till July. So that's where we're saying this one in particular is a next fiscal year problem. You know, we probably won't want to talk about it before July because ideally, we'd want to get a purchase order out for next fiscal year earlier and try to get that hardware in beginning of the summer to start configuring, but.
And this replaces the ones that are expired, the 2015, 28, like, I guess, how many of these are?
It's the entire district.
The entire district.
Correct.
So then are we going to get on like a replacement schedule? Like how long?
That would be my goal, yes.
I was just thinking too, like, we just had the cat team thing with all the facilities referendum. And when you refer to all the things that the switches control and for safety, really, that should have been in our conversation about facilities. I mean, it's I mean, it's technology, but it's, you know, it's really all in the same. So it's just, I'm just thinking for future facilities needs, like possibly putting something like this under that bucket because it is a safety issue.
I I have that same thought in terms of the kind of parallels to facilities. And I was wondering, is one of the pieces we should be looking at that account 46 that we established with like, if I, I mean, it seems like with technology, it's even a little more precarious than facilities in terms of how things evolve. Is that something?
Yeah, I don't I don't think you can use Fund 46 for technology. I mean, we have some infrastructure things, you know, built into the referendum, but it's kind of a fine line between operational needs versus facility needs.
And with the switches specifically in time to E-rate, that's it gets tricky with that.
So 46, I'm sorry. 46 has a strict line on facilities.
Facilities. And the other piece with the with that, if you remember, is we can't touch it for five years. So the the money's, I mean, over time, that we'll be able to use that, but I I don't believe it can be used for technology pieces.
So is this discussion that, I mean, I don't see that an action item on this one. So but I do see it on the transportation, which is probably going to be coming the next.
Yes.
So have in mind the trans the when we're talking about transportation, have in mind all this other funds that we potentially will spend this year.
Well, I think it's it's kind of part of what what Luke was talking about is with the E-rate, having that commitment for the switches is something that we would need sooner rather than later. So, you know, we aren't at that point of of accepting a bid or anything like that. But it's more about the commitment from the board potentially to be able to do that so that we can move forward with the E-rate pieces. The other options that there could be would be to, as Luke had said, replace some of the teacher machines. They wouldn't be put into to the distribution. They wouldn't be distributed until next fiscal year. So we would have to work with the budgets in terms of that, in terms of which which fiscal year budget they came out of. But if you remember back to my conversation earlier, if we're talking about or not earlier tonight, but our our last conversation about fund balance spending, you know, really thinking about what we've what we've been putting in over the years and kind of thinking it in your mind that way. So so if the question is, do we have something to vote on tonight in terms of what to spend toward from the fund balance for technology, we do not. But it's really because of the fact that we have so many moving pieces that we just want to make sure we planted that seed and and know that there's there's these these expenses coming and kind of determining the priority level and where the board's at with those things.
This is non-negotiable because it's a safety issue. When we're talking about locks and phones and our emergency plans. I mean, to me, this is an urgent.
Can you give me some history? How what is the lifespan of a switch? Like what?
So again, just ballpark, I would say probably seven to eight years. With a lot of these newer switches like what we got bids for, we'd be looking at software as well. So they're cloud managed and they've got all the, you know, basically, everybody's moving away from it. Used to be you got on the command line and you did everything on each switch. And now things are moving to more of a software defined networking model where you have a single, you know, web interface where you can apply things to multiple switches. And it really cuts down on the management time. But that piece costs some money. You know, everybody's building in their AI to give you reporting and like this thing is down and whatever. So but based on what we have currently, if we were to move forward with the bid we have, we would be paying this cost approximately 160,000. And then we would have five years before I would need to worry about licensing or other things. We would need to do something with the licensing for year six, seven and eight, however long that hardware is good. But because of the way the E-rate bundles work with this particular vendor, we would have some some time. It's not like we would have recurring costs for the next few years at least.
And then you talked about kind of replacing all of them. So what would be the newest switch that we'd be replacing? Are they all in that older category?
Yes. So we have no switches currently that are not end of support at this point. Everything we have is end of support. The most recent ones were April 2022. The oldest ones are from September 2015. So, yeah, we're we're overdue and there's some more context I could give about some things that we tried to do and had some issues with E-rate a couple of years ago. So the high school was supposed to have been replaced and we had a filing deadline issue with E-rate and that got denied. And so we kind of, again, doing it all at once frankly makes a lot of sense in my mind because you have the consistency of the hardware is the same everywhere. If we have an issue, we can move a switch from here to there without any issue. And I have done my best in this number to account for this new construction. So I would not anticipate, you know, a significant surprise. I'm not saying we couldn't find, we need to add a one switch here or there. But I don't see it like, oh, we need to add 10 switches, which I think is about the number. I'm figuring between the elementary new addition and the high school gym and the bus barn and a few other places that we're going to need.
So thinking like big picture, like you were talking years down the road, would we need then to replace all of them at the same time again? Or you feel as though like we could pick those that are failing and replace them as they go?
You potentially could. I'll say as a general rule, you probably want to replace them all around the same time. Again, just because even if they haven't failed yet, by the time they're at that age where they're starting to fail, if they're generally the same, they're probably going to be failing at about the same time. And we've had that discussion again with the budget as it is. It's hard to do that. But I do think we can have kind of a rolling where there's going to be some some years that we do, you know, we've got network switches. Next year, I'm going to be in the same general position, probably talking about wireless access points with our admin team. And, you know, you've got storage arrays and VMware servers and you've got these other pieces that we're going to need. So whereas it does seem like a large dollar amount in one year, I think, you know, over the course of years, I could probably fill five years worth at about the same level before we maybe have a dip for a couple of years based on all the different things that we really should be having on a replacement cycle and just haven't.
So just one, you you mentioned that the 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 grant, was it a grant?
It's it's E-rate, yeah, federal funding.
Is and you mentioned that the vendor goes to get, does the vendor go to get that grant then?
Yeah. So there's two different types of reimbursement, what they call bear and SPI. And bear, we would pay for the full amount upfront and then we would file with the federal government to get the money back. SPI, we would basically tell the vendor, here's what our portion is. And we would pay the vendor for our portion and then they would go ahead and file. So that's usually the route I prefer and I think the business office usually prefers because it means less money out of our pockets to start with. And then it's on the vendor to deal with all the paperwork of filing for things. I think it makes it easier. The only downside is having to wait till July 1.
Sure. So, you know, things are a little different nowadays with grants at the federal government. Any concerns about not getting the grant?
For this year, I think we're in pretty good shape. I think the discussions about what E-rate looks like going forward are a hot topic in IT circles in education. Nobody really knows. I know people are concerned because obviously that's a chunk of money that we're pretty reliant on to keep up with things. But as far as this year, it's fairly well locked in and as long as we meet all our filing deadlines and whatnot. This is year five of a five year budget cycle, so it's a use it or lose it sort of year. So that money's been allocated. I don't think there's, I mean, never say never, but I don't think there's much chance they claw that back at this point.
Although there is a little bit of a risk.
Yeah, I can see the the more concerning thing is that they. Yeah, I can see the, the more concerning thing is that they would not renew it for upcoming years, and I think that's a discussion that's.
All right, then we'll take this to the next committee meeting and may potentially approve this at, at then the April board, so, thank you.
Thank you.
And now on to transportation?
Yes, so, um, the next piece, at our last meeting, we had talked about the need of a van, and since that meeting, we've learned a few new things. One of them, and I'll let Brad kind of expand on this, but one of them being the availability, as we had discussed, discussed a little bit there about the nine purses nine passenger versus the fifteen passenger and the availability of those vans being, um, you know, they're not, they're rare to find, as well as, um, a potential need for an additional wheelchair lift in our district in the upcoming year, and then additionally, um, another EC, um, um, offering next year for morning and afternoon. Um, so I'm going to let Brad talk a little bit more about, um, kind of pivoting from the van need to, um, more of a short bus need in, out of this current twenty-five, twenty-four, twenty-five budget.
Well, I think it's, it simply comes down to, I can't find a van currently, um, that, that specifically fits our needs. Nine-passenger vans are no longer built by the big three. They've went to twelve to fifteen passenger, that's illegal in Wisconsin, so we have to have, it has to be built as a nine-passenger van. So the solution is, but someone will customize the twelve-passenger van and make it into a nine. That's the solution, I can't find one other than the one in Marshfield, um, which is a three fifty duly. I think it's more than what we need and probably costs more than what we would like to pay. So as I continue to look around, I found, so, so there is a used, Nelson's has a used short bus in same place in Marshfield, has a brand-new Collins bus, short bus with, both with wheelchair lifts included, and then they are sitting in lots right now and are available for purchase right now. That was one of the reasons, um, for my switch. Also, Tasha touched on it, the, the needs, um, are changing, I mean, we currently have one wheelchair bus, right? Potentially three wheelchair, wheelchair kids next year. This is new, starting this year, we didn't have, since I've been here, um, I've driven bus for eight years, we've never had a wheelchair child. Now all of a sudden, we're jumping to three. So it would build in a little redundancy, having two vehicles capable of doing that. Possibly even you would, we would need to run two different routes, one to pick up two, one to pick up one. There's also field trips involved in this. If those students go out on field trips, there goes your wheelchair bus, um, it's gone. And you potentially could not do your afternoon or morning route depending on the field trip. So we're looking at that. Not sure what else I could add to that, it's, it, it really stems from the availability of vans, I can't find one, we can order one, hopefully it's, it would better fit our needs, hopefully it would be cheaper. But that's where I'm at, right now, I just can't find a van.
So Brad, do you want to talk a little bit about the two, um, bids that we've put together, the Collins and the, um, the Nelson's pre-owned, and why you would recommend one over the other?
Sure, were those bids sent to the school members? Yeah, so we have, we have the used, make sure I got the right packet here. Essentially, they're, they're the same bus. One is branded as a Collins, one is branded as a Thomas Mini-Tour. They're the same bus, they're Chevy chassis, um, built in, built to be a school bus with a, with the lighting and the stop arm and the yellow. I, I know I've always taken favor to Nelson's because they're close, um, we have a good relationship with them. The salesman is a member of our community. My recommendation on this particular bus, though, is if someone's offering us a brand-new one for less cost than the used, I think that's the better option at this point.
Are they both fitted with cameras already?
The, the used bus has them in, um, Ascendence would put them in for a cost of twenty-five hundred, so I know that the bid had a sale price on it of one oh six, three hundred, and so that would be additional twenty-five hundred for one oh eight, five hundred. It's still, you know, four thousand less than the used bus. So, yes, cameras in both, they're.
One of the things that we talked about at our last committee meeting was potentially asking your opinion and thoughts on just like a normal minivan. Um, and I know that some minivans can be converted to wheelchair accessibility, obviously probably not as many as a, a minibus, um, but did you have a chance to kind of think that over and what were your thoughts behind that?
Yeah, I, I spent quite a bit of time on thinking about that, and I don't think it fits our needs. You have seven to eight-passenger minivans as opposed to essentially a ten-passenger van. I don't know. It, it's hard to put a number on it, but the times that we, we go nine passengers, you'd be surprised. In the space with, just think of the kids with their amount of backpacks they have, think about the, the the larger vans are easy to clean, easier to clean, easier to get into, more maneuverability. The space constraints are just, it's just too small of a van for a minivan, it will not fit our needs.
So do you think we'll have some availability for nine-passenger vans, keeping fingers crossed, we're going to kind of maybe look more at the minibus route? I mean, because we're going to have to replace vans like sooner than later, right, because that was one thing that was on that, that replacement schedule.
So, talking to the Ascendence salesman, we can have one built for us. That is not a three fifty duly, um, heavy-duty truck basically, um, built in, it, it was a van, it's just a three-quarter ton van, which we don't need. So, yes, we could, we could order one and have it available next year. So that, that is a route we could take. Possibly there's another solution I can find, maybe another company, so that we can get at least two different bids, but there's, there's options, it's just nothing available right now.
And one of the other pieces that Brad and I had talked about with the fleet was the need for replacing more than one vehicle a year. And this, you know, if we were able to make a purchase this year out of the current budget, that would, that would help with that process, hopefully going forward, whether, you know, in, in his inventory proposal, it would be, I believe you had a van and, or you had the short bus next year with a regular bus, and it would be kind of flip-flopping those two with, with a van instead of a short bus next year, so just kind of think of, thinking about the future as well in terms of that.
So, on the, the vehicle inventory from the, the committee meeting, for twenty twenty-five, twenty-six, a new purchase of, well, a the one thirty-five for the twenty twenty-five, that's already been purchased, the one thirty-five eight seventy-three?
Let me just open.
Yes, that's a large bus.
Okay, so that's already been purchased?
That's our yearly purchase of a large bus.
So then, this year, another, uh, going down and later in the meeting, we're going to approve or talk about approval of a the twenty twenty-six, twenty-seven bus.
Correct, which you, which you have three quotes for.
Right, um, and then also this, the, this minibus.
Correct, for this year.
So then.
Possibly.
Okay, the twenty-nine-passenger school bus Minotaur, where does that fit in?
The, the Mini-Tour and the Collins bus are, are two bids for a short bus this year. These are, these are alternatives to the van that I've found on a lot this year that are available for purchase right now.
So Amy, the, the one that you're looking at in twenty-five, twenty-six school year, that twenty-six, twenty-nine passenger, that's what we're proposing to purchase now.
Okay, and then we wouldn't be purchasing it next year?
And then we would propose that we could do a van next year instead of that, so it'd be flip-flopping the van this year for that short bus next year. Because of the availability. As Brad was saying, the one that he has now is, is more than what we need, so we're hoping to swap that around and then potentially have something more that would fit our needs for next year in terms of a van.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Um, I don't know, Brad, if you want to talk a little bit about, I know we're running, you know, really long right now, but potentially talk about the, um, the regular school bus purchase. It's down later, but it's still part of that transportation conversation.
Sure, so, yeah, it's hard to believe another year has gone by, um, but our yearly regular full-size, full, full-size school buses, it's, it's, we're due to sign the contract soon if we want to get one for, for July next year, year and a half from now. So we have three bids, um, a used bus from Nelson's, a new bus from Nelson's, and a new bus, fleet bus from Ascendence. We've, we've been down this road before, I've spoke to you all about this, my recommendation. And, and I, again, I liken this back to ten to fifteen years from now, if we buy a new bus, it's a year newer at that point. Right now, any one of these three, three would say it would fulfill our needs, of course. But again, I would go new because, because we run them end of life. Because our relationship with Nelson's is very good, I was there today under, with some warranty work, worked out very well, and with our salesman being local, I, I would recommend with the new bus from Nelson's. Uh, if I had to choose a number two, I would do the used bus from Nelson's.
And just to confirm, it's a ten thousand or almost eleven thousand dollar difference?
It is.
Yeah, the it's just because looking down ten years, we might get an eleventh year out of it versus ten full.
Well, we're, we're running our bus right up to that sixteen years, so we're going to be keeping it.
For a longer time?
Long, fifteen years, and at, and at year number fifteen, we'll take any, we'll take that extra year, for sure.
I'm not seeing the cost on the Ascendence, I don't know why.
Number two, I'm sorry, six D, dog.
Sixty.
Right, I got the document open, but I can't find the price.
The Ascendence bus is one thirty-seven, three eighty-one.
Okay.
Forty-six.
Is the mileage on, and is the mileage unknown on the pre-owned one because we're not sure how many it will have by the time it comes to our lot? Or our garage?
I thought that was actually in there. Well, it says estimated twenty to twenty-five thousand, so it has twenty to twenty-five thousand on it, is my, is what I'm going to have to assume. Again, that, that is more mileage than the used buses we are used to buying from them. Probably by double.
All right. Is there any more other questions for Brad? All right, thank you.
Thank you, Brad.
Thank you.
And Luke. Okay, real quick update on the compensation committee. We've had two meetings since the last update, and we continue to kind of talk about that three thousand, two thousand dollar increase option, and at this, two meetings ago, we really affirmed that the three thousand is the best option as it, as it fits within the schedule. The, the optics are that something's being potentially taken away from, from the, the, the staff and the schedule if we're, if we bump that down to a two thousand, and really how it disperses throughout the schedule. You know, we would create it in a way so that, the way it would be, um, what's the word I'm looking for, costed within the schedule, the staff members would be costed within the schedule, would be still determined upon how the board decided to give increases, so if it was CPI, or if it was CPI plus, you know, that it would still be costed within that, so, um, that was kind of affirmed at this, a couple of meetings ago. We really talked a lot about strategies and, you know, staying competitive, how we're going to distribute wages increases, and then the balance across all the salary tiers was a lot of the conversation this last time around, we had a virtual meeting on the third, twelfth. And it really was, was talking a lot about, you know, the people on the top end, the people in that middle area, new people coming in, bottom tiers, so there was, you know, not any necessary decisions made, but a lot of really good discussion around, you know, what, what is, um, I don't like using the word fair, um, because I think that when you're trying to make one schedule for over a hundred people, I don't know that fair is the easiest, the best word to describe that, but equitable, I guess, would be maybe better, um, um, for everyone, so, um, really, we're, we're talking, we, we decided and we confirmed that we want to continue to add to the top of the salary schedule for the staff members that continue to be with, with us. And one of the things we want to test out at our next meeting is, you know, the feasibility on what we can do to add to the base wage. Um, and then there's always that thing called the budget, and seeing if it can fit in within the budget, so that's really the most difficult thing, is trying to do everything for everyone while it still fits in the budget. So that's our next test, is to see how it fits, what, you know, what the budget will allow, I guess, or how far we can take it with adding to that base wage while still increasing at the top and, um, having, having it be a competitive salary schedule, so it's a lot of really good discussion. And everyone's really open and everyone's contributing, so it's been, um, it's been really good. I don't know, Ken, if you have anything to add to that, or Tanya, um, in those meetings, but, yeah.
I think, um, your discussion about the base wage, the first tiers or steps, I, part of the discussion revolved around, can we really hire somebody at those levels? You know? So really trying to remain competitive was, was important in that part of the discussion, yeah.
All right, I know you've clarified for me a million times, the sellers, like, it's, it's confusing. So when you get that three thousand dollar bump, let's say CPI is four point one two again. You're not going to get four point one two plus three thousand, the three thousand is going to be part of that four point one two.
Correct.
Correct?
Correct.
Okay, but it feels like you're getting that bump.
Correct.
But it's spread out, okay, I just wanted to clarify that, okay. And then also, I know concerns are when you're cutting off the bottom, you got new people coming in that are at the same level as people that have been there for three or four years, so I think maybe that's part of the discussion too.
Exactly the situation we're working through right now.
Okay. Which is very valid, I think, but also, yeah, so, okay, so ongoing discussion.
Yes, correct.
Is there any other questions? Do you have anything else? All right, sounds good, um, any signed-up people for comments?
Just, um, Barb Gephardt wanted to come and speak in for public comment, but she wasn't able to make it tonight, so instead she dropped off a handwritten letter, which you have a copy of, just regarding, um, screen time and cell phone use in schools.
All right, moving on to the consent agenda. This month's consent agenda includes approval of the following, February seventeen, regular meeting minutes, February twenty-fourth, special meeting minutes, February twenty-five, policy committee proceedings, February twenty-eighth and March twenty-nine, um, February twenty-eighth and March twelfth, teacher compensation committee proceedings, March three, finance personnel committee proceedings, treasures report, vouchers and invoices, and the personnel report. Is there any that someone would like to pull out?
I'll move the board to prove the consent agenda is presented.
Second. Okay, any discussion about any of the items? Hearing none, I will ask for a roll call vote for approval.
Brianna Beslik?
Aye.
Ken Imers?
Aye.
Andrea Graham?
Aye.
Kirk Lund?
Aye.
Amy Litcher?
Aye.
All right, we were, we will move on to our action items, six A. This is the Chromebook, um, action item, and it was discussed earlier, so is there any, we'll have some more discussion now, and then we can have a proposed motion, depending on what the discussion is, so. What is the discussion?
Can I ask you to pull out your magic spreadsheet? I mean, with all of the things that we've talked about, right, and all of the needs, um, where does that bring us?
Oops. So with just give me a second. If we were to, you know, if I'm looking at what last year's budget was for the Chromebooks, just last year to this year, it's about thirty thousand more, so I'll plug in thirty thousand. If we're talking about the switches, I'm going to plug in one sixty, and if we're talking about the recommendation for the, um, bus, I'll put in one oh, one oh nine.
Well, we're not approving switches, though.
I know, but I'm, we're just for discussion purposes, I'm just, and I'll take it.
I would hate to approve one thing and then want something else and then have it be gone. Cause I would hate to approve one thing and then want something else and then have it be gone. So if we're looking.
When I put that in, um, if we were to go worst case scenario, this budget year with the negative, the deficit of about seven hundred thousand, that still puts us at twenty-eight percent fund balance.
With all three of those things.
For those three things.
I mean, I think we have to get Chromebooks into the hands of high schoolers. So whether we get everyone one-to-one or that other little thing I thought of like, oh, maybe we don't need kindergarten, first and second grade to have that, which that's a whole nother discussion.
But it's, it's, the cost is per, I, in my mind, yes, I agree that we have to get everybody one-to-one, but it's buying or leasing. That's one ninety-six, one eighty-six versus leasing fifty-five, eight.
I think long-term it's going to be a better investment to buy. And we have the fund balance now to cover it. Whereas long-term, what if our fund balance runs low based on other needs that arise? So I don't know, I guess based on the information we have right now, I would say to purchase.
I agree that it makes sense to, to look at the long-term view of the cost and that leasing would be more long-term.
I, I would disagree with that fact because we have to also consider what we need for the compensation committee. And that's, that's, I mean, that's and then only saving ten thousand dollars a year, and yes, ten thousand dollars is a, a chunk, but projected ten thousand for leasing those next ten years or whatever it is versus a ten thousand difference versus twenty, or five hundred and fifty thousand now. That, that to me in and with the switches, with the, the, uh, small, the monit, mini tour, where the smaller bus, with the larger, and then with the compensation committee with.
It does seem to be all stacking up, is what you're saying.
Yes, yes. I, I fully agree that we have to go one-to-one. It's just how.
Right. I don't think we can necessarily lump the conversation of compensation committee into like, I think of that as like long-term, year after year investment in our staff, whereas this is like a one-time purchase. Same with the switches. It's like a one, it's a long-term plan with, I don't know, I don't, I don't feel like that's apples to apples.
But in my mind, it's spending down our fund balance.
That is a concern. I think, uh, Tasha, did you say it would be a twenty-eight? Was that right?
Approximately, we put it at twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight percent.
I mean, what if we?
We.
I guess the, the urgency is if you're going to lease, then you're going to lease. You're going to, like, we can't go to leasing after a year or two when we realize that we should have. So yeah, we need to.
So I guess that's one ninety-six, one eighty-six, right, is for the one-to-one high school initiative. But within that initiative, correct me if I'm wrong, it included that first and fourth grade level as well.
Correct.
So if we were to take out that first and fourth grade level, because if our goal is high school, what does that bring our number to?
First and fifth.
If we used older devices for the younger kids and got.
I would look to you guys for that maybe.
I think the only fear is, you know, when I was listening to Luke present, um, when we use the Estra funds to purchase the smart boards, like the farther we push off purchases and the older the equipment becomes, then we're still going back and looking for a lump sum of money to do a whole scale replacement. I think what Luke was trying to do was get us on a, a regular replacement cycle. But, I mean, I, I agree with you, you know, Amy, about looking at the costs. Um, so I, I'd hate to put off the other replacements of the other grade levels because there's still the needs there and then we deal with trying to, you know, fix broken Chromebooks. So maybe it's, it's more of a matter of that commitment to leasing or purchasing, but.
Then we also have to think, I mean, just in part of this consideration, purchasing the nine, one ninety-five for the staff devices. And then, yeah, and then the switches. It's just lots of numbers are adding up.
And, you know, I, I'm thinking, um, twenty-eight percent brings us close to twenty-five, and I think we've, you know, we've talked about where we want to land. But if we go to twenty-eight, um, it, it doesn't give us too many other times to do something similar before we.
And I don't think we ever go back up.
Yeah.
If you assume we, we're not going to go back up. I, I, that's the assumption.
The other question.
We have gone up. We're now at thirty-five percent. So I just don't agree with that sentiment that it never goes back up. I also think back to the compensation committee. The staff.
We're looking at the budget in a, looking at the budget in a, a look at, we're trending year-to-date the same as we have the past five years we've been here, which means we've put money back in the fund balance. So, I mean, it, it's always a little bit of a gamble, but I would say if everything trends through the end of June, the way it has been trending, we should hopefully finish the same as we have in the last couple of years, which means we are finishing to the positive versus the negative.
So Tasha, was your calculations down to twenty-eight percent? Was that assuming we're going to end the year at minus one seven hun, minus seven hundred and two?
Yes, so that is, you know, that's me saying the worst case scenario is us ending the way we budgeted, which as Tanya said, we don't, in the past, we've always been better than that, right? So even if we were halfway better than that, you know, it's, it's been more. The swing has been, you know, up to, there's been years where it was, I guess if I look back three, four years ago, it was about eight hundred dollars swing from what was budgeted to how we ended. And if we were looking at that and it was as much as eight hundred thousand dollar swing from what we budgeted to how we ended, we would end as a positive a hundred thousand. If it was a five hundred thousand dollar swing, right, then we're going to only end at a negative two hundred thousand.
Can we put some of these decisions to when we know more about what, how the budget ends?
I was just thinking that. I feel like these are such big purchased, purchases. And I feel like I'm, like, you know, in your own personal life, sleep on the big purchase, right? And I thought at one point we were trying to do finance committee meetings beforehand. I know these things were brought up, but there weren't really numbers attached to some of them. So now I'm feeling like, wow, like I'm making this decision in two minutes, right? And I don't know if I feel comfortable about that.
Well, I, I do think that we brought numbers last time. We kind of played with the same thing. Um, we used eighty as the van number and things like that. So there, there were some numbers that were in there and, and we can wait, but we're going to be in that fiscal year kind of game again, right? We don't, we don't tie out the end of the year until July, so we're already in that next fiscal year. So we can do that, but that just kind of goes back to which fiscal year it's in. It's certainly be done, um, but just I want the board to kind of understand what fiscal year we're going to be working in, because we don't tie out the end of the year. Remember me saying that forty percent of, I don't remember if it was revenues or expenditures, forty percent and thirty percent of one are just, are, are all booked in the month of June. So to make that prediction in the beginning of June, it gets, it's, it's hard to figure out all those things that tie out in that one month. So it, like I said, it can be done, but those decisions and how things are moving around at that time of year. So that's why we kind of talked about what we've done in the past five years and how we've used the, how we've added to the budget in the past five years. Can we use a hundred and ten thousand dollars of that, you know, couple million that we've put in the past five years to purchasing something for transportation, to putting a little bit of that towards technology? And I think that's where that, you know, that mindset of, and I, and I get it, don't get me wrong, these are big numbers. Um, but I really think that what we've been adding to fund balance over this time, we've been, um, you know, we've been pushing off these expenses in these departments that, that have a dire need to.
So Tasha, do you have a feel for how much the, you gave us the worst ca, the twenty-eight is worst case scenario based on what we have budgeted at a loss, plus the extra expense for this?
Correct.
How much of a percentage is this IT piece?
Oh, like of the overall budget?
Of the fund balance. In other words, um, you know, we've talked about twenty-eight percent, but really, is it, is it going to? I think you said we're at thirty-five, didn't you say?
Yeah, maybe, I don't know. Thirty-four.
Of the entire fund balance, you want to know?
Well, what I'm getting at is.
What percentage, so what's the fund balance now percentage?
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five, and we're going on to twenty-eight, so of that seven percent, what percentage is this?
If we like broke even on the budget, how much of this IT would, uh, fund?
Less, I mean, less than a percent?
I'm just thinking about the timeline too, for the people that have to implement this. Like we have to order, we have to train, we have to get things labeled, we have to get barcodes. We have, like, there's a lot, there's the handbook to update, there's a lot of things that need to be done. And it's already March, so I really don't want to push this off till April.
That was the goal, Andrea, because I know we had talked about like, do we wait and ask the board in July when we close out the books? We know how we're ending for sure. That would be probably the most comfortable choice, because then you got a sure thing. Um, but just exactly for that reason that you're saying is by the time we need to place an order and get things processed and, um, you know, summertime in a district office in a technology department is the busiest time. I mean, they're, they're busy turning things over. So it's like to be able to make that purchase in July and not get Chromebooks till August. I mean, it, you probably aren't getting those in the hands of students by the first day of school.
I also think this is a very long time coming. Like, we've been talking about one-to-one for a long, I mean, I don't know when, when you guys were first elected to the board, if you were starting to talk about it at that point. But since I've been on, which is three years now, it's been a conversation.
So.
Brianna was.
I was just going to say, like, yes, important conversation, decision to make, but I think your switches for that safety reason are even more so needing to come to the forefront and make a decision on.
Yeah.
Yeah. So. So just to put in perspective too, since the twenty nineteen, twenty school year through the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, we've put almost two point three million back into fund balance.
So it's really, we want the one-on-one. It's really the, it's really about this leasing.
Lease versus buy, yeah.
And, um, so with, with that, Tasha, have you kind of yourself looked at leasing, buying? Uh, what is, I think you're seeing it as purchasing is better.
Right. I haven't done the research on it. Luke did a really good job with doing all that research. Um, and I think in my opinion, if that's what you're asking for, um, I would, I would say that buying is the better option. Um, I realize that it's, it's a bigger expense upfront, but if you're looking over time, it really, you know, the difference over time may seem minimal, but that's because we're using that same, same, um, number of student counts too. So that could vary depending on, you know, the number of students. Um, I just think in our conversations too about, um, you know, once you're in that lease option to get out of that lease option, if we decided it wasn't for us, that would be a huge expense to say now we need to buy however many grade levels at a time. So I feel like once you've locked into that lease option, you're in that lease option. And to get out of that would be a huge expense. It's kind of like, say, transportation. I have districts come to me and say, you own your own transportation, that's great, we want to do that, how do we get there? Will you buy twenty buses? It doesn't happen, right? So it's, it's similar on a different scale, but just the way my brain works on them.
But would that, would say if we wanted to get out of the lease option next year, then wouldn't, then the lease, couldn't we just spend the hundred ninety-six next year?
Um, I think that it would be for an additional class, because we've leased for one year, so that it would be an extra class.
Okay.
And when we did the hypothetical numbers, we calculated thirty thousand, right? Because they're using some of that technology budget.
That's already been in the budget, yes.
Right, to take some of this. So as much as it looks like, I mean, money is money, right? I hear you. But as much as this looks like a big number, we're still utilizing some of that budget that's currently there.
Right, and, and in the past couple of years, that budget line item has been anywhere between two twenty-five and one ninety, one seventy-five, so it's fluctuated with the class sizes. So that one ninety is kind of within that range already. Um, it's those other expenses that, yeah, we kind of talked about separately with Luke when Luke came up is, is where those increases to the budget would be. So in my mind, when you think about it that way, it's, it's kind of in the budget already.
All right, well, I, is there any other discussion? Not, and I'll ask for a proposed motion.
Let me see where.
Six A.
I'll move the board approve the Chromebook purchase from Trafira for one hundred ninety-six thousand, one hundred ninety-six, one hundred, sorry, one hundred ninety-six thousand, one hundred and eighty-six dollars. It's almost nine o'clock.
I'll second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll ask for a roll call vote.
Ken Imers?
Aye.
Andrea Graham?
Aye.
Kirk Lund?
Aye.
Brianna Beslik?
Aye.
Amy Litcher?
Aye.
All right, now on to the Start College Now requests and early col, okay, Start College Now request and early college credit program requests. So I'll, can we just do it? I'll move the board approve the Start College Now and early college credit requests as presented.
Second.
So it moved and seconded. Is there any questions or discussion? I see on that list, there's some, like, English one and speech. Are we sure that none of these classes, computer science one, none of these classes are being provided at our high school level? Enter to world history.
I'd say that's a kale question.
I was thinking, I saw that too, like the English one, I was wondering if that's like English one for college.
I also wonder, remember when we had the conversation with the counselors? They said sometimes in order to do some of the other ones, they had to take the prerequisite at the college course level. Could that potentially be this case?
If you were to advance in whatever degree that they're kind of looking for at Madison College, our, our English one, or our, whatever the equivalent is, English eleven or whatever, we still want them as, as much time as possible, take the one here before they take the one there. But that, that one is applicable to their college career, ours is not. So they can take that, that English, it still means, they, they can use that class, but not only college credit towards their degree, but then they can also use that for the credits to graduate.
I would have to assume that the counselors have crossed the Ts and dotted the Is on these applications. And I know they work very closely with the kids when they're applying for this, correct?
And are there any of these kids, like, in, in the, I know we talked about the, the academies, that what was called, like, the welding academy and the education academy. Are any of these part of those? Like, does that meet the five or ten that was able to be in these academies?
I saw a couple of the education ones.
Yeah.
In there.
Yeah, the academies would be listed specifically.
Okay.
There's some works that we can do in the future with Madison College and some of the other ones, but that is like a case-by-case basis.
Okay.
We can group together the number of credits and then I'll call it a health career or a, uh, some other topic, or some other, uh, career cluster of, of an academy.
Okay.
That's done on the side.
Okay. All right, it's been, any other questions or concerns? All right, hearing none, I will ask for a roll call vote.
Andrea Graham?
Aye.
Kirk Lund?
Aye.
Brianna Beslik?
Aye.
Ken Imers?
Aye.
Amy Litcher?
Aye.
All right, audit services contract.
Okay, in January, we had put out a RFP for audit, uh, services. We sent it out to five firms. We heard back from three, um, CLA, Whitley and Running, Penner and Benton. So they provided us with a cost analysis as well as some detailed service information. Um, so I reviewed these with Roseanne Punsle, our accounting specialist. Um, she works as close with auditors as I do. Um, and so we reviewed them together and used kind of an evaluation tool to kind of scale the different pieces and the attributes that we thought were important to an auditor. Um, so you can see in the table that I have there, those different attributes and kind of that weighing score that we put in there. Um, the most important thing being the experience with Wisconsin school auditing as well as government auditing, and then their years of experience and the qualifications that they have. Um, secondly, most important is that audit cost as well as the responses from the references. Um, I didn't do references on Whitley just because we've been working with them, but I received three references from both the two other firms. Um, and then other factors in their consulting costs and then their proposal completeness were scored as well, is kind of a less important, but still important option in there. Um, from the scoring standpoint, um, the low score is the score that would be the best score based on that weighting, um, the way we weighted the score. And Whitley and the CLA kind of came in really close to each other, twenty, Whitley, um, and the CLA at twenty-one. Um, the references were overall really great from, from everyone that I received information back on. There were some slight concerns with the. back on. There were some slight concerns with the bigger companies maybe not having as, as quick of a response time during their busy periods, as well as some potential, you know, some turnover once in a while. But overall, they were really, they were actually really good. But based on everything that was, was considered, my recommendation is to continue with Whitfleet. We've developed a relationship with them over the years. They, they know our district, they know our process. There wouldn't be any training costs associated with that or time associated with that. They are one of the biggest auditors for school districts. I know a lot of people are really happy with Brian Anderson that, that has worked with them. And there's school districts that are trying to work with them, but they really aren't taking on new clients, just taking on those, keeping those existing clients. So that's one of the other reasons that, you know, we would, we would recommend them and would want to continue working with Whitfleet.
I was just gonna say, thanks for the side-by-side comparisons, because it'd be flip back and forth sometimes for documents. I'm like, wait, what was that number? Can I ask a question? So the, the audit that we kind of get, right, that, that would be the financial audit, that big one at the end?
Correct.
So do we do a lot of single audits?
We do a single audit on our state, our state grants. So federal grants are audited. Right now, the threshold for a dollar amount is $750,000. It's in legislation right now to go to a million. And when we even had the Esser funds, those federal Esser funds, we were close to that threshold, but never expended enough in a single year to have that second single audit. So we do have a single audit on our, on our state awards.
So, Tasha, I know in the finance world, there's always a recommendation to change auditors periodically. How long have we been, and I know Whitfleet's a really well-respected auditor. How many years have we used them?
I've been working with Whitfleet for three, and I believe that they worked with Wendy Brockert for two prior to that.
So about five years.
Total five.
We're starting to get to the point where, next year, whatever.
This is a three-year commitment.
This is a three-year commitment. Because I, I know there's the concern that over so many years, maybe the auditors are getting too cozy with the client and, you know, that's just finance stuff. But it is a concern from, I, I think Whitfleet is an excellent auditor. I've been, I've worked with them before, but I would be concerned about that piece. Just keep it on the radar, I guess, you know.
Is there any other comments or questions? Hey, is there, there's no proposed motions though in, in the-
It's right above the table.
Oh, it's right above. Oh, for heaven's sake.
I would just say Brian Anderson has been really great at all of our meetings. Like, he's very easy to understand and explains things in ways that I feel like the general public and the board can understand when you're not doing what you're doing every day. But I, I agree with Ken that maybe after this next three-year, then maybe we do look to someone else just to keep it fresh. But, so yeah, I, I thank you for bringing up that point, because it's possibly something to look at for the next contract.
Yep.
I'll move the board approve the bid from Whitfleet LLC for audit services for the 2024-25, 25-26, and 26-27 school years.
I'll second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll ask for a roll call vote. Kirk Lund?
Aye.
Brianna Beslik?
Aye.
Ken Imers?
Aye.
Andrea Graham?
Aye.
Amy Litcher?
Aye.
All right. Moving on to the school bus purchase for the 2026-27 school year. And I know in the bud-, in the budget, it was, or in the spreadsheet, it was 140, just a blanket, 145 budgeted. What, 140, 145,000, I'm sorry. So.
So this is just for-
This is our general purchase.
Not doing the mini one right now.
Right now, no.
That was just for discussion.
Just the yearly bus.
Correct.
Well, it is, it is next on the agenda.
Oh, sorry.
For this specific action item. This is for the, the regular bus that we do for the 26-27 school year.
Yes. So we, okay. So do you want a motion for this?
Whichever, I mean, 10,000, in my mind, a used vehicle, I, I cannot justify for the, in this, especially with all these numbers, especially pre-owned from Nelson's at $11,000-ish, less than a new, I, I can't justify in purchasing the new, but the second recommendation I would go with. But that's my thought.
So really, it's between-
Well, it's between the first, second, and third recommendation. The two from To-, two from Nelson's and then the ascendants. The first recommendation is the new Tom, 2027 Thomas at 144,765. The second one is the second recommendation from Nelson's 2026 pre-owned Thomas at 133,970. And then the third recommendation is the ascendants 2020, 2026 IC International-
I see.
-at 137, 381.
Whereas I just feel like that 10,000 over the course of 16, 17 years possibly seems minuscule, but that's the trend of our comments.
The mileage is unknown on the, on the used bus?
So it's 20 to 25.
Okay. That was that one, okay.
Like when it gets to us, yeah. So it's not necessarily unknown, unknown, just a specific amount.
Yeah. Okay. Is there a motion for one of the options?
Oh, it, I can understand your-
Oh, and, yeah, any further discussion? I'm sorry.
Well, I understand your thought about the, the 10 or 11,000, you know. But I, I guess I'm thinking, again, over the course of so many years.
And did you say that in the proposed item for this, it was given at 145?
Well, the, in the, the budget spreadsheet that we, the transportation-
The inventory sheet.
The inventory list, it was the 145.
So I think that was an estimate that was just typed in for-
And I think it's, then the budgeted at 145?
The, the quote came in at 144,765, so.
So this fits within our budget, basically.
Correct.
So I propose, I move the board authorize the purchase of the 2027 Thomas 144,765 option.
There's a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussions? Hearing none, I'll ask for a roll call vote. Brianna Beslik?
Aye.
Ken Imers?
Aye.
Andrea Graham?
Aye.
Kirk Lund?
Aye.
Amy Litcher?
No.
All right. School bus purchase, the, the, this is the 21, 29 passenger bus.
Correct.
So.
So this is the one that we discussed that would be above and beyond what's in the current budget, out of this year's budget. So these vehicles are both available on the lot right now, and our, our proposal is to, to make a purchase now for the school year to prepare for the future.
I'll move the board authorize the purchase of a 21-passenger bus in an amount not to exceed $108,800 plus license fee. Okay, it's been moved?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
I think one thing I didn't ask, if we potentially need more space for wheelchairs, does this bus accommodate all of them at the same time? Or are we going to potentially need another one later?
We already have one, I think, right?
This would give us another vehicle with a wheelchair lift.
But will two, like, two wheelchair or three wheelchair folks be able to fit inside?
Know that.
Like, how many wheelchairs fit on one bus, one of these buses, right?
I don't know that. Brad, do you know?
If they seat out, it means there's more wheelchairs. That would be the option.
And we don't have any other buses currently that have that lift option.
We have one.
We do have one. So that would give us two.
Right. So as Brad was talking earlier too, if that bus was out on a field trip, we don't have it available for another student, then we might have up to three.
Is there any other questions?
Because we're potentially looking at some EC kiddos coming in?
As well as that.
Because then we would need that daily rotation for getting them to and from.
Does this come out of a special, I remember there was a conversation about how, like, one of the vans could only be used for special education students because it was purchased with those funds. This is not coming out of that bucket?
Correct. So if we use special ed funds, no. We could, but it could only be used for special ed. Then we couldn't use it for regular ed in any way.
Okay. So this bu-, this 21, 29 passenger would be able to be used for special ed or non-special ed or anything in between?
Correct.
Teacher party bus.
Is it easy to get the chairs in and out if we would need to use it for something else? Or are they, like, take the chairs out, it's kind of, they stay out?
Yeah, they're, they're both in it.
Okay.
It's not that type. So we, it's that, like-
Right. Okay.
Is there any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, I will ask for a roll call vote. Ken Imers?
Aye.
Andrea Graham?
Aye.
Kirk Lund?
Aye.
Brianna Beslik?
Aye.
Amy Litcher?
Aye.
All right. Moving on to the FFA land use agreement. And this is the annual agreement with Roger and Beth Wiedenfeld for the use of the five-acre plot. And it's a, in, I'm guessing it's at $1 or less. So it's a, it's a, it's a donation, I'm sorry. So.
I'll move the board approve the FFA land use agreement with Roger and Beth Wiedenfeld and thank them for their support of our FFA program and students.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
I just want to say, you know, this is a very generous thing for our FFA, so.
Absolutely. So any other comments? Hearing none, I will ask for a roll call vote. Andrea Graham?
Aye.
Kirk Lund?
Aye.
Brianna Beslik?
Aye.
Ken Imers?
Aye.
Amy Litcher?
Aye.
Moving on, September 2025 Fine Arts Weekend Field Trip.
I move the board approve the Fine Arts Weekend Field Trip from September 26th to 27th, 2025, in spring green as presented. It is understood that the board will incur no cost and will accept no liability for any funds lost for any reason.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, I will ask for a roll call vote. Kirk Lund?
Aye.
Brianna Beslik?
Aye.
Ken Imers?
Aye.
Andrea Graham?
Aye.
Amy Litcher?
Aye.
All right. Moving on to summer school staffing. The board is being asked to approve the summer schools contracts for the 2025 summer school session.
Just to confirm, the pay is the same as last year, right?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions? All right.
I'll, I'll move the board approve the summer school staffing as presented.
I'll second. Is there any questions, concerns? All right. Hearing none, I'll ask for a roll call vote. Brianna Beslik?
Aye.
Ken Imers?
Aye.
Andrea Graham?
Aye.
Kirk Lund?
Aye.
Amy Litcher?
Aye.
All right. Agreement with Rock Lake Activity Center. The board will consider the revised agreement with Rock Lake Activity Center for the senior center, senior center programming as was discussed in the committee, right?
Correct.
Okay. Is there any?
Yeah, I certainly appreciate the work that Rock Lake Activity Center has done with this, this past year. I, I do like the idea in the MOU to, for surveys of the members to determine, you know, program design.
Yeah, that's probably the biggest change is, you know, before relying on a smaller advisory team. And so I think this new MOU really relies on getting feedback from the entire group of participants at the senior center where it's, you know, versus surveys, attendance, and then some of the focus groups face-to-face, you know, qualitative type of feedback. I'd say that's the biggest change in this. And then just really the decision-making process as far as the programming. So I know Renee is here, so Carmen and Renee will be working together. And really, we had a very, I thought, great meeting of just looking at some long-range planning for the year and getting a lot of those events up and planned, you know, about a year in advance. And we look forward to continuing to work with Arlec.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I'll move the board approve the amendment with the Rock Lake-
The agreement.
Or agreement, Jesus. I'll move the board approve the agreement with the Rock Lake Activity Center as presented.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, I'll ask for a roll call vote. Ken Imers?
Aye.
Andrea Graham?
Aye.
Kirk Lund?
Aye.
Brianna Beslik?
Aye.
Amy Litcher?
Aye.
All right. Lastly, the action item for gifts. They, we sincerely thank all the community donate, donors and are completely in awe of everything that comes in on a monthly basis, so.
I'll move the board thank those generous donors again for their continued support of our students and programs here at the Lake Mills Area School District. We've got Nathaniel Basting for donating a viola and accessories valued at $555 for the orchestra department, the Lake Mills United Methodist Church and Mission Team for their $600 donation to the district's food pantry, The Mill, the Lake Mills Youth Wrestling Group for donating $600 to the Lake Mills High School Wrestling Department, Roger and Beth Wiedenfeld for donating their five acres of farmland valued at $1,250 to provide educational opportunities for the Lake Mills FFA students and programs, to McDonald's for donating 250 bookmarks to the Lake Mills Elementary School with a free Happy Meal coupon with an estimated value of $1,400, a $10,000 donation in memory of Brian Shanky to the district's food pantry, The Mill, and a $10,000 donation in memory of Brian Shanky to the district's Special Education Department to support students for supplies, equipment, field trips, and fun.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll ask for a roll call vote. Andrea Graham?
Aye.
Kirk Lund?
Aye.
Brianna Beslik?
Aye.
Ken Imers?
Aye.
And, uh, Amy Litcher?
Aye.
All right. Upcoming form, uh, agi-, agenda items, you can see them there. The CISA Two, approval of the policies that are, are not being, going to be discussed at the next policy committee, board election results, youth apprenticeship, community rec department presentation, and then a special meeting on the 28th for the board reorg, so.
I was wondering when the solar project will come back around with this, more information about like worst-case scenario, best-case, those kind of for the grants and all that.
So we were looking at already ahead to personal finance committee meeting. And so I want to work with you on that, just because in light of the discussion with looking at next year's budget and all of that, just trying to make sure that we have enough time to go through all of that. But yes, that is on our radar to bring that back around.
I was just gonna say, we always encourage any sort of kiddo presentation. So I mean, if those forensic kiddos want to come and do a little for our viewing and online viewers, that'd be fun.
I second that.
All right. Hearing none, no other items and seeing no other items listed, I will ask for a motion to adjourn. I'll move we adjourn.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. We are adjourned.